Call this meeting of the Seymour City Council to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Grady Bennett?
Yes.
Mary Carpenter?
Yes.
Lady and Chris?
Yes.
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
It is determined there is a quorum.
We have a quorum and we will begin our meeting. I would ask, David, would you mind? No, you don't want to do that. How about that guy next to you? I know him. Would you like to say that we just move on to the approval of the bills that we have presented? Do you have those bills in front of you? Any questions on the bills that are presented?
That's Robert Perryman.
That's me.
That's Mr. Link. That's the organization to which he's attached. And so when you see Robert Perryman on there, you know we're talking about our city attorney. Any other questions about any of the bills as presented?
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion on the floor to accept and pay the bills. I suppose it's to accept.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes and we will instruct Mr. Bennett to sign the checks. We're down to the citizens' comments, which is always an important part of our meeting. And I see some citizens out here that maybe want to express their self. And what I would ask you to do is to raise your hand. The chair will recognize you. Come to the podium that Mr. Burke is providing for you. And please limit your remarks to three minutes. Do I hear any? Yes, the chair recognizes us. If you'd come to the podium, please, and state your name and your purpose.
Hi, my name is Jeanette, or Jenny Kraft. And I'm a newcomer to Seymour. Moved here from Mansfield last year.
Yes, ma'am.
About a year ago. And I love Seymour. Seymour is a great little town.
Good town.
Yeah. And I'm really enjoying it. I live just right over here on Summit Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
And I noticed that you got rid of the train whistles going through town. And that was a real blessing. And I'm hearing impaired. And so I'd like to put in a, I guess it's a complaint. I don't like to complain, but about the noon whistle and the five o'clock whistle.
Yes, ma'am.
It is so painful to me. I have to, you know, look at my watch and make sure that I'm inside when that whistle goes off every day. It's very, very painful. And I was wondering if there's some purpose to that whistle. Why do you blow that whistle?
Well, you know what? That's a real good question, being a newcomer. You know, I didn't know exactly what that was all about myself. But I had supposed that it would be kind of the events of yesteryear, you know, when we used to have a noon whistle and a five o'clock whistle. But I'm gonna let Mr. Burke answer that because he's more familiar with that than I. So, Mr. Burke, could you speak to that, please?
Basing the buck, isn't it?
No, well, that might be it.
That's Mitchell's.
Mitch has got his hand up. Chair recognizes Mr.
Like years ago, they were, when I grew up, when Jim grew up. And they, there were quite a few citizens. I don't know why they didn't do that.
Yep.
And so Dean Rattle, when he was sitting on the board, brought up the motion to get reinstated.
Yeah.
It's been quite a few years since it's been run. And it took us quite a bit to get that siren to work. But once we got it working, you know, that's why it's put back. I mean, the board wanted to revive the tradition.
Yeah, it was brought back at citizens' request.
It was?
Yes.
Oh, that's too bad.
But we respect.
Really?
We've got a timer on it. I mean, we can turn, you know, back. I think it's at 12 seconds.
I can see why it was important in the old days. But there's a lot of customs and so on that are no longer, you know, appropriate. Because we have watches and we have cell phones that tell us the time. And so I was just, it would just be wonderful. I mean, for me especially, maybe other people that have hearing disabilities would benefit. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Well, we appreciate you coming and expressing yourself. And we always want to encourage that. Thank you very much.
Mitch, can that be turned down before it's knocked quiet as well? You can't do anything about it. Just your timer's on, the thing that you can adjust.
All right. We appreciate citizens' comments very much. And I appreciate this lady coming and expressing herself. Now, I know we hit some other hands. I thought we had other hands. This is time for citizens' comments. Sing none. We'll move on into the electric rates and the budget discussion. We've talked about that in the past, this fuel adjustment charge. And we're trying to run the city as economically as possible. And so some of our council members are very concerned about that. And so they've expressed an interest to try to roll back the price, as it were, and to actually save some of our taxpayers on their electric rates. So the chair would entertain a discussion?
Well, I'd like a motion to just try three months. Roll it back. Take away the PPA charge for three months. Let's see. We'd have to redo the budget, I know.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor for, to repeal the fuel adjustment charge.
It would help our people here in Seymour.
It would help some. It would help some. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Now it's time for discussion. Mr. Bennett?
I think that's a reckless decision at this point. I don't think there's enough research that has been done as far as what the economical impact it will have on the city. We've not carved out any places in the budget that can absorb or sacrifice that kind of revenue.
Let's drop the rates down to 10 percent then, instead of 12 percent.
It figures out to the same dollar amount. You can keep doing.
No, if you add that together, it's 12 percent. If you put the PPA charge in the light bill, and it's 12 percent.
I think the only, to me, the only real solution in removing this PPA would be if there was a tax increase at coin side that replaced that revenue, rather than just trying to forego it at this time. You've got your budget before you. Where are we gonna take $380,000?
Ms. Howe, could you tell us the impact on repealing that on the city budget?
What was it, 30 plus thousand?
300 and, was it 300?
335, I think.
335 annually?
Yeah.
Annually, but for three months it would be.
It was on the, I don't have that paper.
It would be 80,000 dollars.
If it's 12, that would be, it was around $100,000.
I have a question. When you get through.
Yes. Chair recognizes Mary.
Where did this funding come from before it started showing up separately on our bills?
It was there all along.
Where was it?
It was there all along. It just didn't have a line item of its own.
So it was added on to?
Not added on.
Well, to bill.
It's been there since the power purchase agreement with this Mudge-Muck entity started. This has been there from day one, which actually was a contract that started before me and Jim had gotten on. It didn't start before we got on the board, but the contract was entered into. And then about eight months later, the contract began. And that all started at that time. The only reason you see it now is because all the citizens that come before us earlier this year, or maybe it was late last year, wanting it itemized on their bill so they could see what it was. Maybe an earlier this year. I can tell you, it was Stephanie Akers, it was Heath Johnson, it was them. I sat right back there in the corner and specifically said we were not being transparent enough because that wasn't itemized or broke down. So it's not new. It's always been there, at least since the relationship with Show Me ended and it began with this Mudge-Muck, our new power provider.
And what exactly are we paying?
What are we paying?
Per kilowatt hour.
What, each individual?
That varies.
Each family, each household.
The base rate is 10.08.
10.08 is the base rate.
Is the base rate. And the percentage, the PPA, varies. It fluctuates each month. But if you averaged it, I think it would average close to 12 cents throughout the year.
Yeah.
Which, again, is not out of line with rates in this area, this region of the United States. It doesn't compete with cooperative rates.
It was just 10 cents a kilowatt. Yeah.
It was just 10 cents a kilowatt.
That would be right. What?
That has been on there since this contract with Mudge-Muck started, when the contract with Show Me terminated.
What, 12 cents, you're saying?
The 10.08 has been there from the beginning for the base rate. And the power purchase adjustment has been there from the beginning. What are we, the first contract was five years and we're two years into this one? Or are we a year into this one?
Not quite.
It's been there for six years anyhow.
So we're paying, what, 5.5 cents to buy?
On the kilowatt?
5.45.
5.45?
And then we're charging 12 cents?
But it's not just a raw 5.45. We pay demand charges. We pay wheeling charges.
But if we try for three months for the people?
We can if we can find the room in the budget to take the expenditures. It's gotta match. I mean.
It has to balance out. Our budget's balanced. And if we take out.
What can we do, what can we do away with?
If we take out 80,000, we have to put back in 80,000.
Let me ask you this. In three months, when we determine that we couldn't live without the 80,000 or 100,000 per quarter and we reinstate that, at the peak of winter, at the peak of demand, December, January, February, how do you think the citizens are gonna receive that when we add that 15, 10, 12, 15 percent increase back on their bill at that time?
Well, I'm saying, let's not do the streets. How much have we got to do away with the streets?
But can you not do the streets every year continually?
What you're saying, but what you're saying by that is it's not what we can cut, it's what we can neglect. If we neglect the streets, we can put the money anywhere.
So the poor people that can't pay their bills, can't turn their air conditioner on, that's.
And can't afford to get their front ends relying on their cars once the streets are gone.
They need a lot.
Good point.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
May I point out that PPA is by ordinance? So if we're gonna change that at all?
Yes.
We have to change the ordinance.
Yes.
I mean, it's not just as easy as just.
It's not just cut and dry?
No, ma'am.
No.
Yes, it is ordinance. And so we would have to bring that ordinance before the board, change it, sell ordinance.
It would have to be brought up. We can, we can position that on our calendar for our next meeting and bring the ordinance before the board, if that's your pleasure.
I'm not, I'm not being hard-hearted towards those that are struggling to pay their bills, but.
You can't use the air conditioner?
But we're, for a small percentage of the populace, we're gonna put the city in the position that we're trying to, I mean, we're not gonna be able to pay our air conditioning bills. We're not gonna be able to pay our street maintenance. We're not gonna be able to pay our electric maintenance.
It's just a mathematical fact. If you do away with this permanently, city's going bankrupt.
I'm saying, I'm saying, let's just say.
There's a motion, I think, Mr. Ashley, is for three months.
$35,000 out of our budget and we're done.
But what happens in three months when you reinstate it at the height, the peak demand? Our peak demand is probably set in August and January, if I was guessing. Maybe September and February if it's lagging by 30 or 60 days. So we're gonna reinstate that in three months and increase their bill by 20 percent or 10 percent or 15 percent or even 5 percent, whatever it equates to. At the time that they're receiving their highest bill already and they've become accustomed to that low rate, do you not think that would create some hardship in and of itself? Just in the timing of it?
Might calm it down a little bit and it wouldn't.
Well, I think there would be an uproar like we hadn't seen when we reinstated that PPA.
Never know, can't try, so I don't know.
Go down to the.
Ava told us.
Go down to the benefit line and snatch it away from them and see, and then give it to them and take it away and see how well it goes. It's not, it's, people are gonna be angry.
They're already angry. They're already angry.
Well, I think the bigger.
They are to some extent.
There's no question about it. The citizens are concerned about their electric bills.
So we, we pay it too.
But I don't think the solution.
Yes, we all pay it. Yes, we do.
I don't think the solution is to put the city in a financial hardship because of a small percentage of the populace is complaining about their electric rate. It's not out of line.
Well, Ava said they was paying.
Ava also, Ava also said that they pay their people minimum wage. And I'm sure that all those people in Ava aren't making minimum wage.
I'm going to go back to wages. I'm asking about the wage, I'm concerned about that.
Mansfield also said that they didn't charge the PPA, when in fact they do.
Yes.
Or did they say that?
It's just not broken out.
It's not itemized.
No.
It's there, though.
Yes, I'm sure that it all gets paid. Every municipality gets charged for that fuel adjustment charge and/or the PPA. But whether or not they pass that on to the citizens, it's all in their bill, is what Grady's saying.
They don't itemize it, but they're passing it on to citizens.
They're passing, passing it on.
It's not in their bill, but they're passing it on as well.
Yeah, it is being passed on. It might not show it on the bill.
The last city of Mansfield bill that I put a pencil to figured up to 14 cents a kilowatt hour. And I'm sure that you take their rate structure, which is a little more complex than ours, and then add in the PPA, and that's the difference. But theirs, on the particular bills that I looked at, was 13 and a half to 14 and a half cents.
Well, what we've got is a motion on the floor and a second. And now we've had some good discussion on this. But my suggestion is to table this until next meeting so that we can look at exactly what it does to us on the budget, see how, if we choose to amend the ordinance to reflect your request. Is that reasonable? So let's put that on the agenda for next meeting so we'll table this at this time and bring it up at our next meeting and try to have some more numbers and take a look at that ordinance at that time. But the pleasure of the board is what needs to be done. And the pleasure of Councilman Crisp, rightfully so, is to try to save the citizens' money. Very good. So we're gonna table that. Let's.
I think we need to explore the possibility of a sales tax increase to offset that revenue.
Well, okay, then.
Just something, something to help the city, you know.
Offset their utility bills.
But the thing is, if you cut that PPA back, okay, well, they've saved that much. But then you raise the taxes, so they pay that. They're paying the same thing across the board. We're not helping, we're not helping, we're just moving money around.
Not completely. Because if you did in the form of a sales tax, it's spread out not just amongst the utility purchasers, but anybody that passes through and gets the gas.
That is true, but it's still being paid.
It is, absolutely.
That's true.
It's spread out over a bigger audience, if you will.
Okay. Then we've had good discussion on that. We're gonna table that until the next meeting. Be prepared to bring evidence and talk to, speak to that issue. And we'll bring the ordinance before us. And you'll all have a copy before you at the next meeting. And we'll go into that.
Mr. Wimmer has something to say.
Yes.
I have a question, Larry. For this conversation next meeting regarding the cutting of PPA, I mean, are we actually going to get to see the public some numbers of what the actual financial impact of doing this for three months is going to be?
Yes. Ms. Howe.
I'd like to see some hard numbers.
Hard numbers.
Yeah, I think so. And then, I mean, if you're actually going to entertain changing the ordinance, I think that there should be a list of what's getting cut. I mean, I pay a pretty decent amount of taxes, I'm down. I'd like to know what services as a citizen we're looking to cut.
Well, I think we can pretty well tell that, Dan, by looking at the actual numbers. We know it's around $100,000. But Ms. Howe, if you would bring before us at our next meeting, be prepared to speak to the exact dollars. If we take away the fuel adjustment charge for three months, we need a dollar amount. So we'll speak to that at our next meeting.
But to answer your question, we can't possibly tell him what's gonna be cut until we have another budget study and see where we can cut.
Well, that's what we're gonna do at the next meeting. We'll look at our budget.
I would suggest that we would have a special meeting to do that because it's, I can tell you now, it's gonna take hours.
It will take some time. But Councilman Crisp.
I didn't know if you guys were gonna have a special meeting in the interim prior to this meeting. That's, that's a back end of my question. I didn't know, because you're gonna have to have.
I don't see how we can possibly do it at a meeting. We'll be here till 3 o'clock in the morning.
Well, we might have to have, it may bleed over into another meeting, but, but I, if we have a special meeting.
Just a budget meeting. A budget meeting and that's all we do?
A revision of the budget meeting. If we're gonna have a special meeting to consider this along with it. Am I right, Mr. Link? We have to wait two weeks before we consider an amendment to an ordinance?
You mean, if you have a budget meeting and you decide to do it, we would just have to have the ordinance on 24 hours before a meeting? But I mean, you, what I'm getting at is you won't be able to rewrite the ordinance at the budget meeting and vote on it to pass it. I mean, you would have to discuss the budget, see what could be cut, what you wanna do, and then bring the ordinance change at the next council meeting. But as long as it's on the agenda a full 24 hours before the meeting, you'd be fine.
There you go. So we could bring it and have the ordinance before us. We can consider the budget and look at this thing the way these two council members want to do. So the next thing I need to ask you is, when is that going to be convenient for everyone here? We're in September. This is the 14th. So the next available time would be the 21st, is that right? If we do it the same night.
I don't know if I can be here next week or not.
Well, that's what we're looking at, Jim. When could you be here, brother?
Well, I don't know right now.
Councilman Crisp, could you be here the 21st? Councilman Carpenter?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
I'm unsure about that date. Possibly.
We would have a quorum. We really need everybody here if we're gonna discuss this thing. But the chair is open.
I can't tell you tonight when I can be here.
You'd like to amend the motion to save what time we'll consider this? Councilman Crisp?
Well, Jim says he don't know if he can be here.
Well, let's set it for the 21st and see what happens.
And see if he can make it. Okay. Well, okay, we're not gonna get the whole thing done in that meeting probably anyway. So we'll set the meeting at the 21st and we'll bring back those issues that we talked about with the fixed dollar amount that it will impact the budget and look at the budget and see what can be done. Very good. Moving on, then, to the supervisor report from Mitch Plummer. Mr. Plummer.
The polls just set for, was that 2 on clock, dark field, 1 on main, 3 on center, 2 on the highway, 1 on 3, 1 on roads, 1 on 3rd, 1 on water. And we said a hole starting on that 3-page, you know, for the steel plant and the automobile. We had some water leaks. And had one last night. And then being all of the water, the Apple Festival. And the 10th port lights up. Up in John Rogers, restations. And quirky dog calls. And the Anthony Simkins, who worked him last year or year and a half ago or something. That's 3-page meters. He comes last week and just, I'm supposed to bring him to the port back sometime next week.
What company is that?
I'm blind. You say it and I'll agree with you. I know the man and I know the company, but I.
It's a request for 3-page.
If it was for Grady's benefit, I just, that's why I ask.
I'm familiar.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, he worked for Will Oldman, go off now.
So after you ran down a list of those polls, what is that in total, Mitch? 13 polls that we replaced. And I think we identified 120. So we're down to like 107. Yeah, 107. We're making progress. We're getting some things done. Good. Anything else, Mr. Plummer? Okay, thank you for that report. And I'm gonna back up one because I overlooked, not for you, Mitch, but for our police report. And Mr. Wright is still off, I think, so.
Yeah, the chief's on vacation this week. The chief's on vacation this week. He did come back a little while last week.
Right.
He's been doing pretty good, all things considered.
Yes.
We had a pretty good Apple Festival. You know, we had, all the officers were working at least part of that. We didn't have any major incidents, so it went off pretty well. There's always a few little minor things, little disagreements, but nothing that, nothing happened to make it. It was a pretty good weekend.
Good, good. I thought we had an excellent Apple Festival this one.
Oh, yeah. Big turnout.
A big, big turnout this year.
We did have one incident. The owner, the new owner of the parking lot cross from the YMCA, evidently people got pulled to the stage for the parade in his parking lot. He wasn't aware of that. So he requests that next time he get, at least in 4 on the first.
Right. Well, that's.
But that's, that's the only real, real incident that he had to complain about, aside from just a little minor misunderstanding.
I'll bring up a conversation I had just before I came to the meeting with Helen. What was your mentors? What, Kelly?
Mallory.
Mallory.
Mallory, Mallory. Helen Mallory. And she said that in the morning, when the buses are running, that people speed up and down Main Street. And that she requests that we maybe look at that a little closer. And then also, she says, right when schools getting out, and I guess it's the young people from school, really race up and down there. And said you saw one incident where this person had to really shut their vehicle down hard because they just weren't watching and the bus was stopped right in front of them.
Yeah, I understand. And we do try and watch, there's several different roads that we watch in the mornings. So we try and rotate around the best we can. We've had complaints on Garfield Street about people speeding there, so.
Right.
We may sit there.
That's another bad one.
We got in front of the, between the Y and the elementary school. We try and have somebody sit there in the. somebody sit there in the mornings, and then try and drive back and forth up down Main Street and between Main, on that plant that happened.
It's, it's a hard, hard thing to do, but just put it in your think tank and the next time you're down that way, you might look at it long about the time school takes up, I guess that'd be around eight o'clock.
Generally, we start crawling down there about seven forty-five.
Right.
About eight fifteen, that's the busiest period of time when the school's going on there.
You're going.
And then about three o'clock, we try and be down there to deter people from speeding.
Right, right, and I know you do, but I got that request this afternoon and I promised that I would bring it to your attention tonight.
I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we're going to move on then and to Chuck Smith. Chuck?
Hey, I guess we all got a copy of mine, my report as always. There's really not a whole lot to report since the last board meeting that we've pretty well consumed with apparently the Apple Festival, all the happening, and putting most of the park and bringing the rock to the chicken shack and just all that stuff, but, considering we did Apple Fest, don't think there's any major complaints, everything got done, took a couple days to clean up afterwards, but that's all done now and we're back on, working on the sidewalk down by the school, hopefully by then here in the next, next couple of weeks.
Yes, and I know we did do some extensive work out at cemetery, cutting brush, did City do that?
Yeah, they did.
We, City did do that, okay, yeah, yeah, and it, it looks a lot better, and Sam and I viewed that down there, did we talk with the folks that mow the grass down there, Sam?
Yes.
So, are they going to come back and do?
They come back and picked up the flowers on the front of the.
Yes, yeah, that's right, they did do that.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
And so the cemetery does look better, looks a lot better, Mr. James or Pudd, whichever one did, or both, the thing I had, I noticed that in Sam's report, and he'll get to that here in a minute, but there was a big hole out there that we put, placed something over?
We filled it down, it's coming on the square.
It was somewhere, I guess, on the road, or was it in the, in the lawn?
On the square, yeah.
Okay.
Because it was on the west side of the square, it looked like an animal or something that dug down in there and dug a hole.
Wow.
We filled it back in with dirt, camped it down.
Okay, all right, anything else?
It's all I've got.
Do you have any kind of report on the squirrel attack?
Squirrel attack?
We had a, a local citizen that was attacked by a squirrel at City Park during the Apple Festival twice.
Wasn't losing to me.
And there we've got an eyewitness, John, John's an eyewitness to it, I don't know what was in, in that squirrel's mind, but, but he did, he said he, he hit him, he jumped about five feet and hit him in the neck, said first, first time he, he felt it, he thought someone just coming up and slapping him, you know, just to get his attention, and then he turned around and here it come again. So, anyway, no, I just threw that out, I thought maybe you hadn't, but I have talked to that fellow this week and he, he's alive and well.
I had heard that story.
Yeah, Leon Holloway's his name.
Questions?
No, no questions from the board?
No.
Thank you, Chuck. We're moving on down to the administrator's report, Mr. Burke.
I've got something to the February board, Wayne Ottmeyer isn't here tonight. Mayor and I have been briefing on, on this, and so I'll just briefly go over it with you, if you have any questions, I certainly will try to get, get the answer for you. Thank you. And the very first thing on there is, is a letter, notice to proceed, this is, this will be going to Tim Hancock, President of Smith and Edwards, and this is just telling him that we have the money approved and we did get both of those grants approved this week, and, okay, and so, that's the first page, the second page is amendment to agreement for professional services, and what this is, is an extension of Wayne Ottmeyer's contract to cover the time that he would have to spend getting the UV system installed and, and running, and that's really all that, all that is, and.
And no additional cost to the city?
No, no, none at all, all right, and then the next, the next page is, is contract change order, and what this is, is a, is a change order to our UV contract against our, against the money that we've, we've gotten from the DNR, and it has, it has went up, on the decrease in contract price there, you see ten thousand seven hundred, ten thousand and seventy-five dollars, the increase in contract price was thirty-four three hundred, and with the reduction of the ten oh seventy-five, it's twenty-four thou, about twenty-four thousand. The reason for the increase in the price is that the equipment that we needed for the UV system went up because we had over a year delay in getting the money approved from the DNR, so, you know, it just went up, and so, we're just going to have to eat that money, I mean, we're going to have to pay it because we've got to have the equipment, and so that's really all these, these pages are about, the last page there, you can see, well, I mean, the contract change, I'm sorry, not the last page, the one we were just on, the contract change order has been signed by Wayne Ottmeyer, it's also been signed by, by Tim and Smith and Edwards, and tonight we'll need to get the mayor to sign it as well.
With the approval of the council.
So that we can approve the increase in price.
Now, Sam?
Yes.
As I was visiting with Mr. Ottmeyer, is, am I correct in this, that we, we expect it maybe, since we have about eleven thousand dollars in contractual variance, so that if we have an overrun, it can be no more than that, so they should pick up about five thousand, five to six thousand dollars of this money?
Yes.
And then the city will have to pick up the rest.
Yes, and, yeah, we, yes, we know that.
Right, so, so that's, it's just going to be a little bit more, and because, the reason why, just the materials have gone up.
Right, it, it's not something that somebody did, it's just, it just took a while to get the money approved and, and the equipment went up in the meantime.
So, everything's approved on the ground?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, you, you also have copies of my report, I don't know if you have any questions or not, but, of course, the main thing that, that I report to you tonight is that the city has, has been awarded both of those contracts, I mean, both of those awards from the DNR, and you ladies got to sit in on that this week, and, and the mayor as well, and that's something that, I know Mary was on the board ten years ago and we tried to get, was she okay? And so, that's been a long time coming.
Very long time.
So, it was a big victory for the city this week to get that approved, okay, and then the other thing that I had on here was that Mitch has already covered his, his major break that we had yesterday on Mike Mahan Street, I did contact the DNR today and we, and give them all the details that I had, and the only thing they asked us to do was take a couple of samples, I've already called Ron Lawson and, and he's contacted Pudd, so that's in the works already, and we'll do that, get a couple of samples to make sure the water's, you know, like it should be.
Mr. Burke, I had a lady call me today and wanted to know how much longer we would have chlorine in our water, said her husband had served chlorine, so just kind of wondered if it would be much longer.
We had turned the chlorine off up until we had the break yesterday, yes, and so, you know, our water is perfectly good without the chlorine, but when you have the breaks, you have to, have to have a safeguard.
They can count it.
So, the answer to that is, in a couple of days.
That won't leave it, when we set that new valve on that one line.
Oh, okay.
I'll leave it for that because we'll have to check that hole. Was that vision?
Yeah.
We'll have to check that hole again. Make sure our, our water, that our water will pass.
So, it goes to a couple of weeks probably, okay?
Any other questions for Sam? I, I have just one, Sam, I noticed we got a couple of big breaks recently, I mean, the one on Patel, and now this one, and those were both mains, could, could you tell us how significant was that break, was it just caused by old lines or the movement of the ground, or what, what would you say the reason is?
The line, the condition.
Right, so no one's been digging around there, the phone company or no one else?
No, I, I think we can see.
But these were main lines, these were what, six-inch lines?
No, they were four-inch.
Four-inch lines? Is that?
The breaks were significant, I mean, you put up one of these plastic water bottles and, and it, I mean, that big.
And it just, just blew out and you put a saddle back on it, you fix it while the pressure was on it?
No.
You had to shut it down?
That's, that's a little hard to do.
So, well, yeah, and that would be right.
We did not put a saddle on it, we replaced, yeah, he got bigger.
Okay, well, that was just my question, is how did we repair the line?
Oh, yeah.
But you put a section in there, you, you cut that section out and just put a new section in?
Plastic session with a copper on both ends.
Correct.
That connects it to the old pipe, to the new pipe.
Good, okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Retaining to the water department, do we have the equipment to find our water pipes, like, we couldn't find the shut-off valve down here on Division, or rather, down there by the cabinet shop?
Okay.
We couldn't find the cut-off valves, and I think a cou- couple of other places, do we have the equipment to find that?
Good question.
No.
And why not? Wouldn't it make sense to have that instead of having other people come in and do that?
It would, I don't know how expensive that is, the rural water comes in, yeah, we are, it'd be so handy to have a.
Yeah. And it'd probably speed things up.
Oh, yeah.
Really speed things up.
We'll have to budget it, I mean, it's, it's not, it's expensive, so we can certainly do that.
Well, and I hear the, hear the councilman saying that we, maybe we would need to get some prices on, on whatever it takes to, to locate these lines.
Yeah, we do, we need to get some prices and get it done because I think it's important to the future of the city.
We, we do, as Pudd said, we do belong to the Rural Water Association.
Yeah.
And they do this work for us for free, but we're starting to get the prices.
But it would be more convenient if we didn't have to call someone.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions for Mr. Burke while he heads the floor? I have a statement to make while you head the floor, Mr. Burke, I think I would be very remiss, the mayor showed up to sign these grants, true, and my name was on the dotted line, true, so, and the mayor generally is who signs these things, but I just want to give credit where credit is due, Sam's been here about, what, three and a half years, and he's worked on this thing extensively, and, and he had help from the council and from others and from Mr. Ottmeyer, but he's worked on this thing hard, and I think he deserves some credit, and I hand, hand it to you, Sam, you've done a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's a team effort, though, you know, there's been several people that worked on it.
Yes, I know.
And I'm just glad that the city has finally got it done.
Absolutely.
It's all the city benefits from all of our hard work.
When you work together, that's what you get, results.
Good job.
Good, good job, Sam. All right, I guess we're being finished with that, we're going to move into the mayor's report, so I've had each of you sent a, a list of the August worksheet, who worked, what hours, what vacation was taken, what sick pay was taken, and on what days, and then I also had, with the help of Ms. Howe, Howe, the total dollar amount that it costs the city for the overtime that was extended, or expended during the month of August. Now, I don't know if this is typical, and she and I talked about this just a little, it might not be typical because we had hours last month on that, that repair for, for that line break, and this month, of course, we've got another line break, so that would be anti-typical, but if you took, I don't know, Mr. James, what would you say total we, we took man-hours in repairing those leaks, for instance, last night, could you tell me?
Four and a half hours.
Four and a half hours last night.
But, and, and how many people were there?
Four.
Four? Were there sixteen, seventeen, eighteen hours?
Mitch doesn't count.
Mitch doesn't count.
No, salary.
Mitch doesn't charge it.
So, twelve.
Then you paid three.
Well, okay, then, then three times four and a half would be twelve, thirteen and a half hours roughly, so you take thirteen and a half hours off of this, and the reason I, I point this out to you, is we've been talking about this work schedule that we're working now, and I wanted you to see every month how that is put together, I personally feel like there needs to be some adjustments made, and I think we will, we said we would talk about this in, in this meeting, so I wanted you to be able to see that this scheduling program that we have now is resulting in six hundred and twenty-five dollars ninety-four cents a month additionally to, that's got to come out of the budget, and so it's resulting in some overtime, we can, we can lesside twelve and a half hours of that because that's approximately what it took to, to fix the leak, and those are things that come up that you can't, I mean, they've got to be dealt with at the time that they present theirself. So, other than that, we have, at different times, people taking sick leave, and I've been reading our policy and procedure manual, and, and what it says and how it affects the sick pay and what you can take the sick pay for, so occasionally we'll have a person that'll take a half a day off for sick leave, two and a half hours for sick leave, and, and I understand at least one of those persons were taking his elderly mother for a hospital or for a doctor's appointment, and which is allowed, but at other times, we have a half a day for sick leave, but I, I suppose that the, the policy and procedure manual says that if, if they are off, then they must present to the city a doctor's release form to come back to work, and I guess, have we got those, Sam?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay, because it's important that the city receives those, and it's, it's a matter of policy that they present them to us if they're taking sick leave, so, and the reason I point this out, that it's, the sick leave is not there to take off when you don't want to take, take away from your salary, and you just want to take some sick leave time, it's not allowed under a policy and procedure manual, it can't be used that way, so, so I point that out. So I point that out in my report. And also to say that I think that our present system is, in my opinion, in my opinion, is not our best solution to our workforce in how we carry on our city business. Second of all, I think Ms. Howe, and I'll give her credit, she fills out these worksheets on a monthly basis. But now, as you receive your worksheet every month, this is not necessarily what is carried out at the end of the month. In other words, you might have half a day of sick day or one vacation day in here. And so it's my opinion, it's the chair's opinion, that those should not allow, be allowed in such a way to disrupt the work of the city. But they should have a uniform manner to take time off. And that should be planned a month, at least a month in advance, so that the monthly schedule would reflect that. So, and that's not casting a bad light on anybody. It's just saying that this system, in my opinion, is not working the best for the city. And that there is a couple items there, especially in our policy and procedure, that we need to review, especially on the sick leave time. Because the numbers do not follow through on, if you figure the amount of sick leave that each employee can glean to theirself within a year's time, it's, the numbers don't match. That's in the policy and procedure manual. So we need probably to look at that and to revise how we go about paying for sick leave. Especially sick leave and then sometimes on just taking time off and taking a vacation day here and a vacation day there. So I think we need revision in that. One other thing, and then the chair would entertain any discussion on what I've just said. We've got two members of the planning and zoning. And we do have an item that's come up to come before the planning and zoning commission. So, and I do believe that that, do you remember, do you recall what our next planning and zoning meeting is? Don't know? Jim, do you recall?
I don't remember receiving scheduling another meeting.
Well, I think we did.
Well, you may be right, but I don't remember. I don't remember.
It's the 21st.
21st, okay, that, we may not be able to have that because we got a Penn Z that night. I have it down here, 21st at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
So.
I may not be here.
Well, we'll have a quorum, Jim. But anyway, I want to present to the board now, and I want a motion to approve if it suits the board, Anna Sturdivant and Alicia Harden. There's two ladies have requested to be placed on the planning and zoning commission.
Alicia Hayden.
Hayden, Hayden, did I say Harden? Hayden, it is Hayden. So those are two ladies that I would present to you. And the chair would entertain a motion to accept them. We have.
Go ahead.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, these two ladies will be added then. Alicia Sturdivant and Anna Sturdivant and Alicia Harden, not Harden, Hayden. All right, then I've just presented to you some numbers that you can look at and digest overtime work and those sort of things. And that leads us down to a point of discussion. We can either bring it up in the alderman's time to bring issues before the council or we can talk about it now and entertain a motion.
Larry, I've thought a lot about this. I really have. And honestly, the way this work schedule is, I don't know how to get anything done. With so many people off and not working together, I just don't know how they can get anything done. So what I would really like to see, and even make a motion, I'd really like to see Leslie move downstairs. And I'd like for the workers to work in the summertime when it's hot, from seven to four, otherwise eight to five. And the girls in the office. And I think when Shelby isn't busy, she could help Leslie. But I think Leslie needs to be downstairs. You don't have anybody to talk to. But that's my thing. But with the way this schedule is, how could you work together and get anything done?
Well, it's true that if you look at these hours worked.
Here's some, four people off one day, three people off. I don't know how you line up the work schedule.
The days that were.
I'd like to work like that.
That were real light on staffing is Monday and Friday. Those are two days that were light.
Most of them has a four-day weekend.
No, they don't. That's not correct.
There are several that do.
That is not correct.
Yeah, they are.
They take their days off, it rotates.
Yeah, they've got days off.
It is a regular pattern.
Yeah.
And how many weeks does it take before they get? You guys are calling it a four-day weekend. They put in forty hours, then they don't work for four days, but that next week they put in forty hours then.
But how can you get anything done, Jim?
Well, Nadine, with all due respect, if it is such a problem, why didn't you address it the last time you were on the board? It wasn't a.
We didn't do that.
You certainly did. No, they worked ten-hour days at that time too, Nadine.
Well, in the summertime.
That's a fact, isn't that right?
In the summertime.
No.
In the summertime.
It was changed. They worked ten hours a day. It wasn't a problem then, and it's not a problem now.
Did you work?
As far as the sick, as far as the sick days that we were talking about, you know, if there's some adjustments that need to be done in that for the betterment of the city, I don't have any problem at all. But changing from a four-day work week to a five-day work week doesn't make any sense at all. It doesn't make any sense at all.
When could you line up?
And as far as the overtime,
Yeah.
there hasn't been anything shown that there won't, that that will cut the overtime by going, if you go to five-day week. There's no evidence of that at all.
If I had to my boys, I'd have to hire someone else to work.
We're not talking about your boys, we're talking about the city.
Ten hours, you'd have to hire someone else to work?
No, as a matter of fact, we're covered for fifty hours a week instead of forty. If you have everybody here eight hours a day, it'll be forty instead of fifty. The public suffers from it.
No, the public.
The public suffers from it, the employees suffer from it because they have to take time off to go get off. What do we got now?
Well, I just don't know how you even schedule.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
My timing was perfect.
Well, like I said, if it wasn't a problem when you guys were here before, and it wasn't.
I never know it's working like that.
And it's not a problem now.
I know they work in the summertime.
It's not a problem now. What's not getting done?
I don't know.
Well, then you don't have anything to argue.
Okay, what gets done? I mean, I don't know.
Let me read to you from.
I don't know.
Let me just read to you from policy. Policy and procedure manual as it reflects on sick leave. Sick leave pay is granted when earned during periods of absence from work in the event of actual personal illness or injury. An employee who is unable to report to work due to illness or physical incapacity shall notify his supervisor prior to scheduled work time. Such leave may not be allowed unless such report has been made. The employee must be required to furnish a doctor's statement confirming his illness. And that's upon returning to work. So, and that's why we've got some gaps in our scheduling for our employees. That's one reason. I think another reason is because we're allowing the employees to decide if they want to take a Friday off or a Tuesday off.
You mean we're allowing the employees to actually have a life?
What do you mean?
That's what I mean.
No.
Let's ask Mitch and validate this last statement. Do the employees choose at free will if they want a Friday or Monday or a Tuesday off? Or do they clear that through you on scheduling?
Clear through that, you know, of course it's summertime.
How? Mr. Ploner, can you tell us how you reflect that to, and who you advise that employees are going to take off during the course, let's say, September, the balance of this month? How do you handle that?
Well, I just try to keep it to make the schedule, you know, from July and on Fridays. But basically, Friday is a better time to take off than it is any time other during the week.
So that's why we're always light on Friday. But let me ask you this. If you've got, if you've got an employee or employees that are under your jurisdiction, under your authority, and you're going to have them off, let's say, two days during the month of October, which is coming up, how do you, how do you make sure that that's in the schedule?
Well, most time we reveal that we're going to take off or they're going to take off. And there's been several times we reworked the schedule.
Just if they turn away requests and then I just plug it into the schedule if they're going to be gone.
And if, but the reason I point that out is because the schedule as presented is not always the schedule that's worked because employees take off. And it's been suggested that Mr. Burke might take over this scheduling of city employees instead of Ms. Howe, because he sees them on a day-to-day basis. And he knows who's working and who's taking care of what.
Who suggested that? I didn't suggest that.
No, no, I didn't say, you did, Sam.
Who didn't suggest that?
Well. I would present that as, from the chair's position, that it might be better that the city administrator handled that rather than Ms. Howe.
Just, Mayor, with all due respect, once again, we are making an issue out of a non-issue. If there's some things on the sick days that need to be adjusted, we can go through some of that. But getting rid of the four-day work week is a terrible mistake.
Here's my take on it. If our leaders aren't competent enough to handle some fluctuating schedules, as it may happen, you can't always predict when you're going to be sick or when a child's going to be sick.
Well, this is true.
When a family member's going to go to the doctor or simply when something comes up and you would just rather go fishing than go to work. I don't know what the case is. I trust that our department heads are competent enough to handle that and to make discretionary decisions that, James, you can't have off Friday to go to the lake because we've already got six people off. I know that's ridiculous, we don't have six people off at a time, but we're continually talking about how their wages and their benefits and their cost to the city is so detrimental. But we can't stand to live one day without them, so which wage is it?
Okay, Har, you take it off a day a week. Why do you work five days a week?
When I have the days, I take them off.
Well, yeah, but why don't you work five days?
He does, he works five days.
Take off a day a week.
Why don't I?
Yeah, why don't they let all of you guys take off?
I guess that'd be a question for Jim Carden during the Board of Seamen. This isn't Seaman O. And this isn't Jim or them.
You will find that more and more industries, more and more companies are going to four-day weeks.
Let me, I never say anything. I never say anything. I sit here and I listen and I listen and I look. And that's what I've been doing since the last meeting, is going around town and looking. And I, we're here to serve the city. We're not here to serve us.
Right.
We're not here to serve them.
Right.
We are not.
Right.
They're good people, they do a good job.
Right.
But we're not here to serve them.
Right.
We are here to serve the citizens of Seymour.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, Mary.
And the people that have called me, oh, God, my phone just rings off the dead gum wall. I got to where I wouldn't answer it. Because they don't, they want a five-day work week. They said, I want people here five days a week. And they want to get into City Hall. I had a lady call me and she says, well, you got this big building there. And I said, wait a minute. I was on the board when we elected to buy this building. It was for the citizens of Seymour, to make the citizens of Seymour happy. You know, something to be proud of. But no, we have a utility office and that's it. No one can get in this door. It's not only locked from the outside, it's locked on the inside. I can see it back here where they pay their bills, but I cannot see it up here. We've got a big building, what for? All we need is a little utility office, sell City Hall, get a little office. That's all we need. If that's all we're going, no, if that's all we're going to utilize.
Could I ask?
What?
When all this scheduling was brought up and originally here not too long ago following your guys' election and the question was posed with Leslie's schedule and not being available in the front office, your argument was that Leslie needed to work five days because somebody's presence needed to be in that front office so that that door was open, so that the city is approachable and people could come in and talk to a tangible person. Is that not your statement?
No, Mr. Bennett, I think if you recall, we'll go back and check. Mr. Bennett, I've got the floor. Mr. Bennett, I need to talk first and then I'll let you talk.
He was still talking.
I hadn't finished.
Well, very good. Go ahead and finish, Mr. Bennett.
Then you requested and moved her upstairs saying that you would be the face of the city in the front office. How many hours a week are you in that front office with that door unlocked, approachable in a tangible way to citizens?
Well, not every day.
Okay. Should we change your schedule?
I'll tell you what, I'll work for whatever you'll work for, Mr. Bennett, and I'll be here as many hours as you are. But here's the thing.
Well, I'm voting for seventy-five a meeting. Let's vote to decrease your pay to the same if you'll stand behind that statement.
I'll stand behind any statement I make, Mr. Bennett.
I'll make that motion as soon as it gets to the alderman.
You know what? You can make that, but we'd have to amend the ordinance in order to be able to do that. But anyway, now it's my turn to talk. My turn to talk. Mr. Bennett, I believe, your memory is a little faulty, because I believe I suggested that I would come down and man that front office down there on days when I was here. And that's what I still do. But, but Ms. Howe requested that she go upstairs. You advised against that. You did not want that. And then it was presented to you that it was her idea, and so you consented to that. It was not my idea at all, Mr. Bennett.
Leslie never asked to move upstairs.
Show me one.
Leslie never asked to move upstairs.
Your memory appears to be as cloudy as mine, Mr. Mayor, because I've never been against Leslie going upstairs. If that's what makes sense to best run the city, then I wouldn't have been opposed to that in that manner. I had never opposed that. Show me where I opposed her moving upstairs until I learned that it was allegedly her recommendation.
But that's not the point.
We're chasing.
That's not the point.
What is the point is that Leslie is upstairs and I'm downstairs. And when I'm here, I open the door. So we're talking about this work schedule right now. We got off of it just a little bit. Let's get back on the work schedule and what we're going to do about it. Now, at the last meeting, we had a motion on the floor and a second, and we decided that we could bring it up at this meeting for further discussion before we voted on that. So that's where we're at right now. If you have something to add to that, Mr. Bennett, you have the floor.
I'm assuming this is the further discussion part, and I have plenty to do that. And the form of opposition. I don't know what discussion I missed out on before I returned.
Not much, not on this.
The statement I made applies in the sense that we're kind of the pot calling the kettle black if we're not available and we're saying that they're not available. We're trying to blame them because the front office hasn't unlocked. That has nothing to do with their schedule.
No, it's not the front office, it's the front of City Hall. This is City Hall. But all we have is a utility office where people can come in and request to see them. But they can't see them unless they request.
Exactly. And my point is, it was the mayor whom brought it to our attention to move Leslie upstairs so she could do her job uninterrupted. Am I wrong in saying that?
In, in my opinion.
Yep.
I have, I have some more to.
If you're asking the chairs, if you're asking for the chair's opinion on that.
I'm not asking for your opinion, I'm asking if that was a.
I do not remember it that way, Mr. Bennett. I do not remember it that way.
But we, we can, we, we can move after a while to bring Leslie back downstairs, but let's stay on track and talk about it for today.
We can do that, let's, let's do that.
Look at this first page I handed you. In the hours of four-thirty to five-thirty, just in the month of August, we collected over six thousand dollars in utility fees. Seven AM to eight AM, we collected over seventeen thousand dollars in utility fees.
At the bank, during the time.
In the utility office, yes.
This is seven AM to eight AM and, and after five. If we run a eight to five schedule, we wouldn't be able to accommodate these.
Well, that's what, that's what that drop box makes.
That drop box is back there, but if you ever wanted to talk to a human.
So we're certain.
Say they won't, they won't be there if we go to this.
Exactly.
So your, so your point is valid in your context, but not in ours?
Well, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying.
Okay, then, then there's, there's validity to these numbers.
Most people don't come around at five o'clock to talk to someone now.
Well, the numbers are.
If they work till four thirty, they do.
No, not too many.
There are just as many benefits as there are cons to a four-day and a.
No, this is city law.
Show me, show me some tangible, some tangible facts of, of how a five-day work week is more beneficial than a four-day work week. What day of the week are the most accidents on?
Mr. Mayor.
So it, it's gonna change from a safety aspect if we can't, wha- what is the benefit? I'm just looking for benefits. How does this outweigh?
What I'm saying, everybody would be to work together. I just don't know how you could plan anything.
Well, it, it's a varied schedule, that's, that's a fact.
That's what I'm saying, how could you plan your work?
That's a fact.
How have we done it for the last, how many years?
I don't know, have you?
How, how many, how have we, how has anything gotten done?
I think our, our department leaders are more than competent enough to, to handle some minor schedules.
And not, not, not only do I trust them with that, but they've proven that they are.
They're working like they want to work. It's not like the people.
Is the work getting done?
They're working, they're working like we're telling them to. The council at one time set the schedule, they didn't choose that schedule. A council at one time chose that schedule for them.
Is council, is council wants to change it back then?
We have a, a lady that wants to say something to council, so.
Here, here.
I'm calling.
Tell, tell us who you are again and address the council.
My name is Arlene Shipley. Most everybody in town knows me, I'm a good gossip. But I'm calling this a referee. I'm calling time out. There've been comments and stuff and bickering and fussing and going on, and I don't want to come to a meeting and have to pick sides, or this one or that. Brother Sam's got plenty enough to do besides scheduling the workers, their, their, their work. He's got enough to do, okay? And you said that it wasn't all about these people, or this or that, it was for the city. Well, these people are the city.
Absolutely.
These workers are the cities. They are here when they're supposed to be here. If they're not, they have a good reason why they're not. And we need these people.
Yes.
Every one of them.
Yes.
They all have a job to do. Where Lisa's upstairs, where she's downstairs, she's got a job to do. And I think it should be her choice and decision where she wants to work.
No, no, that's not true. That's not true.
Because, well, the boss can say who, you know, schedule where she wants them, but she's very important. She's important to this coun, this town, she's doing a good job, as far as I'm concerned. And I don't want to come over here in these meetings and hear all this bickering and fussing and fighting and disgusting and bickering. We're not getting a blooming thing done. We're not. And every, and every.
That's right, absolutely right.
Oh, we changed thirteen calls in the last eight months.
Yes, we.
Bless your heart.
She's our horn about that.
I'm, I'm not talking about just that, you know. Uh, so far, you've stood by your employees and you've stood by people, and I appreciate that. And I've got nothing to say other than I believe every one of us has a place and a point that we work and we do what we can for the better of the community and everyone concerned, not just the city workers, but all of us, every one of us. We need someone to stand by us and with us and for us, for everybody's good. It's not how many hours you work, how many days you got off, what's going on, what's there. We all have someone we answer to.
That's correct.
We do. And that's where it comes. You, you have a boss that's over you, it's your job to, uh, do your best part to serve the people, to serve your boss, and, and do what's right. And I just, I think it's ridiculous when we, we've got a town that is in just ruins. Ever since I come here, this town, I mean, until we get in unity and one accord with each other and not be upset and aggravated because this didn't go and that didn't go because I wanted it to, that you fight together to uphold the people, and this town, we're not gonna get nowhere. And I don't want to come to these meetings and hear all this bickering and going on. I don't want to come in here and I want to hear someone say, you know, well, we've got this worked out, we got this plan set in motion, and this thing's gonna take off, and Seymour is gonna be noted for what it should be, for the people, by the people, and for everyone concerned. Well, anyway, that's my point of view. You can like it or you might not like it, but it don't matter. I feel that all these people are just as important as anyone else, and we all need each other.
Yes, okay. Thank you for your comment, Ms. Shipley. All right, moving along. We have another comment from the audience.
First off, I want to say, and it's, it's no offense to the workers, and I understand their issue with working four days a week to five days a week, they're accustomed to working four days a week, but I want to thank the mayor and the two new aldermen, because I've been coming to meetings for over three years and I've seen everything go backwards. I've seen the city come about City Hall, personal interest, and everything. This is the first time I've seen strong, strong, strong leadership, and it's freaking everybody out.
Ever accuse me of using this office for personal gain, you couldn't be possibly be any more wrong, and I resent it.
You represent it, I agree.
I resent it.
Let's not have a debate here.
No, Larry, when a man stands up there and insults me, I've got a right to say something. Wouldn't be a man if I didn't.
It went backwards.
I want to go down the path of decisions for personal interest.
Jim, let's, let's try to lay your side.
I'm sorry, I'm kidding.
Yeah.
I'm good. I'm not, I'm not trying to cause any problems, but if I ran.
You just did.
I ran, if I ran my business like the schedule with four people missing a day, you have a teamwork issue, that's the issue. There just needs a little more scheduling. The guys in the field could probably still do four days a week if they worked together, if the schedule really cohesive. And even in my business, we run five days a week with the office, because the world only shuts down on weekends. And in a city, you have administrator and you have clerk, and not a specific person, it's a specific job, then they have to sign papers and do certain things, and if they're not here enough, the city does stall. And I've seen it, and I've seen a lot of things happen. That's why this audit's coming, guys. People aren't happy. And the five, work, five-day work week will be a lot more efficient, it's guaranteed. We run a fifty-hour schedule, or a five-day schedule, on four, we have four days of work and five days scheduled, so we have to split it apart, and I've looked at the schedule, and it gets a lot of time off during the week. And what I see is if you're gonna have teamwork, it harms the teamwork. If they're doing individual jobs, it won't change that, unless they're needed here for a specific function every day. When is working five days a week been a punishment? I don't understand that. It's not. I worked five, six, seven, my guys worked four, and they, it works, but we work four of the same days every week. The fifth day is for overtime if we're behind. And they all make sense, and like I said, it's back and forth. And I love Mary's comment, strong leadership. This city is the citizens. The budgets are for the citizens, the streets are for the citizens. Yes, City Hall's important, and it doesn't, we do not want to go broke, but it doesn't need new, millions of new cars, it doesn't need all this stuff, it's, we have a ton of stuff. Let's go look around, we're, we're doing well. But it comes at a price, at ten to twenty percent extra on utility bills, instead of raising taxes where it belongs. I mean, it's all over. I love the words that are used, team effort, team effort fairness, pro-citizen, efficient, the leadership. And I don't think it's a punishment, but it is gonna be very, very difficult if you go to five days for, for these people. They've done this for many, many years, they're accustomed to it, they're used to having three and four days off before the next work schedule, and it's gonna make a huge disruption upon their lives. And that's, I mean, I understand why you're upset, it makes a lot of sense, but then when you see the schedule, you also gotta understand the efficiency's not there, there's a lot of people missing a lot of the time. And I do, I have many employees, it comes out of my pocket, I do understand. It's very, very much about efficiency, if I didn't do it, I would be broke. It's very risky what I do for a business, and it's very difficult. But it's not personal for anybody, but going from four days to five days, you're gonna have resistance and resentment. But I understand the point, and the leadership's strong, and I like seeing that we're talking pro-citizen, 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 pro-citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerkey, for your comments. And the only reason I gavelled you down, Jim, is that we don't need to have.
You didn't gavel me down.
Okay.
You may have been on your little hammer over there, but.
I did, I did do that. In, in parliamentary procedure, you gotta have a, you gotta have order in the meeting, and that's the only thing I was trying to do. Now.
Let's take a fifteen-minute break.
Parliamentary? It's a board, it's a pleasure of the board to take a break, we've got a suggestion on the floor right now, Mr. Bennett.
If it would suit the one that recommended the break, I've got a couple statements I'd like to make prior to, before, after all, still in the middle of a schedule discussion.
Go ahead, I'm all right.
He's okay with that. Go ahead, Mr. Bennett.
I've always been told if it's not broke, don't fix it. You asked why I don't work a four-day schedule at Seminole? I'm assuming because they think if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Why would they change their work schedule if it's working for them? The same would apply to us. If it's working for us, that doesn't mean Seminole's wrong, it doesn't mean we're right. It's working for us, it's working for them, why would we change it?
So you think it's working, but now.
Does your, does your, does your water come on when you turn the faucet?
Well, I hope it does.
Okay, does your toilet flush when you hit the handle?
I hope not to paint the water.
Or are your lights on when you get up to get ready for work? This is what we're talking about. No, this is what we're talking about.
No, we're not talking about that, we're talking about the work schedule.
And, and this pertains directly to the work schedule. If your water is working, your toilet's working, and your lights are coming on, these men are doing their job. They do not choose their work schedule. When I got home to eat supper last night and get ready for church, these men weren't the time clock, but headed the other direction.
They were.
Because there was a water leak. And when I was laying in bed, they were still into the late hours of the night trying to repair it. They work when it is necessary for them to outside of their scheduled workday. If they're off and they need to come in, they come in. Do you guys not? If there's emergencies that arise?
They, they would on a five-day schedule too, Mr. Bennett.
Things are working, why are we trying to reinvent the wheel?
Let's come from the eyes with them and say work, all of them work four days a week.
What do we do that fifth day?
Well, they can maybe rotate the one.
That's what they do.
That's what we're doing.
Where they're all working together.
That's exactly what we're doing.
We're, we're not, we're not getting an effective program when we do that. What we're, what we're practicing now is, is not the best efforts, not the best use of our time as employees.
No, it's not.
Now.
Then clarify what, what your suggestion is.
Well, I said all of them work four days, all of them.
Okay.
Every one of them come to work, then maybe on Friday, maybe one of them, each of them could rotate on Friday.
Could I, could I make a motion that the schedule be amended and reflect that fifty percent of the employees are off on Monday, fifty percent are off on Friday, and every six months it rotates? It's a four-day work week and it's a full schedule. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, you'll have eight people here.
Three days.
On Monday, on Monday and Friday, you'll have half a crew, Monday and Friday, you can look it up, are your highest probability of having an accident or an incident, you reduce your liability in terms of, of workman's comp plans on there. You can look at statistics, Monday and Friday.
What we'd have to do is amend the motion, because we have a motion on the floor already and a second, we're just in discussion, Mr. Bennett. It would have to be amended by the motion maker, and I believe that was.
I didn't have the motion, I didn't, did you guys?
Yeah.
I did. No, you guys did.
Yeah, we, we did a motion and a second at the last meeting, but we didn't.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't differ, I don't think a motion cares from meeting to meeting. That, that would almost reflect your recommendation, that everybody works a four-day week, but it rotates, which is the current situation.
Rotate for one person to work on Friday?
If you have eight people working four days a week.
Right.
You can't just have one person off per day. According to the math, you have to have two people off per day.
Just go back to five days.
Am I, am I wrong? You have to have two off per day, that's six men, not two.
And it sounds like you don't know what you want.
Yes, I know what I want.
Well, you want five days and then you want four, and some of them.
I think it, uh.
Some of them working in Lancefield.
It sounds like Mr. Chris was trying to accommodate Mr. Bennett, but chair recognizes Mr. Ivey.
We're fiddling while Rome's burning.
Absolutely.
And ten years, we have a UV. Roll it back ten years, wasn't there a big bruhaha about ten years ago when staffing and everything changed, and it took ten years to get that accomplished? We've got GIS now and tremendous tools to enable them to do their job. Have you reviewed it? I know you guys have.
I have.
The tool that we've got in GIS is phenomenal. It enables them to do a much better job, and you're not even aware of it. Fiddling while Rome's burning. No personal gain, my friend. I'll prove it.
It, it's.
I signed the audit for one reason, I like audits. Audits are good, I paid for many, very essential. We get audited financially every year. This audit is administratively, and will help put things in place the way they're supposed to be, where we're fiddling while Rome's burning. We don't need to take and destroy what was going on ten years ago with a good council and a good staff, and that's what's happening, the way you're demystifying employees' morale, period. So they need to know that you're behind them, they'll get the work done. That'll happen. But this city is going nowhere with this council if it stays in this.
Well, it didn't go too far when you saw the council.
Well, you're right, I was there two years, and we didn't get anything done but the GIS. And, oh, oh, yeah, there was a, a bee thing. There was a personal thing about that.
Well, let, let's stay on the issue at hand, if you would, Mr. Ivey.
You forgot chickens.
You forgot chickens.
You forgot chickens.
We ran off some good employees ten years ago. Jerry Miller was mayor, they had a lot of things going at that point in time. People here were part of that then too. They stayed. They saw it. They can regurgitate exactly what happened, and they're seeing it again tonight.
Well, I appreciate your comment. Appreciate your comment, Mr. Ivey. Always. You know, we did a, I, I did for the council a study, and, and some received it sadly, and some received it not so much. But every city, any direction, north, south, east, or west, all over this section of the state, works five days a week, eight hours a day. That's the way, that's the way they effectively use. Seminole works their employees the same way. And the reason why is that it's the most effective use of your time. That's why they work you that way. Well, you can argue with Mr. Carpenter if you want to, but I don't think he'll favor that too well. But I think it's the most effective use of the time. Mr. Ash-
Larry, when you did your research on these other towns that work eight, or five, eight-hour days?
Yes.
Did you find out how much they're paying in overtime?
I found out that, I found out how they work their on-call schedules for the weekend. They get paid for on-call, and then if they work-
How much are they paying in overtime?
Uh, you know, Jim, I didn't, I didn't reflect that, no.
Well, see, then we don't have anything to compare this to. We've got what we're paying in overtime. They may be paying considerably more, which would mean that this is more efficient for us than what they're doing.
But the other side of that coin is, Jim, that they may be paying less.
But we don't know that, do we?
Well, I can just tell you this.
And it would be very foolish to go ahead and move and pass something tonight when we don't have all the facts, wouldn't it?
Well, I can tell you this, that if four tens were the most effective way, then there would be a lot of other towns in, in our area that would be doing that.
No, more and more and more, four years, nobody-
Is the state of Missouri wrong in their choosing a four-ten schedule?
We are moving in that direction, from five-day weeks to four-day weeks. That's just a fact.
How many schools are switching to a four-day school week?
Well, that would be okay if everybody worked together, but half of them's off.
I, I don't know, Mr. Bennett, to answer that question.
That's what I'm saying.
It's trending upwards.
What we're, what we're trying to achieve in all this, I think what the, our, at least two of our council persons are, are trying to achieve in this is a more effective work schedule for the town. To get more work done, to see people here. And what I pointed out to you is that Monday-
People aren't here five days a week.
Monday is a very light day. You don't have anything going on here in the city. We don't start any projects on Monday. And Friday, you have a very skeleton crew here. So what do you do? You can't start work on Monday on a project, you can't start work on Friday. You have to do it Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Now, on those three days, you can get work done here, because you have a full crew. But I've got the, the numbers here to bear that out.
What, what do you mean you can't start work on Monday?
Well, you can start work, but a project, you know, we, we don't start-
Ask Paul what he thinks. Ask Paul what he thinks.
How can you not start a project? What, what do you want me to? I kind of view my role in this as what's legal on stuff, and they're truly, this is a policy decision of the board. I mean, there's, do I work five days a week? Yes, but it's not legal or illegal to work four tens or five eights.
Well, what's most of the towns work that you represent?
We're not representing most towns.
She, she just asked a question, Jim. It's a fair question.
It's on and on, it's been answered over and over.
With the other cities I work for, who work five days a week, I mean, but-
Mr. Bennett.
Why do you suppose the state of Missouri, as well as many other state road departments, work a four-ten schedule the majority of the year? Do you think that they determined that it's less efficient, and they just want to squander more of our tax dollars?
I don't think that at all, Mr. Bennett. But I do think that we could more efficiently use our employees, uh, more efficiently than what we're doing right now. Because I can show you through, uh, past schedules that we have had several people that have had four-day work weeks.
Every four weeks, if it's a rolling schedule, every four weeks?
Well, it's, it's more than that. I can show you three in a month, three, four-day weekends in, in a month. I can show you that.
What part of vacation time?
Let's see, if they all work together, but-
I think they're all working together as it is. That's, that's the point.
Some of it's sick leave, and some of it's vacation time.
Do, do you, you, Mr. Mayor, you said that-
Yes, sir.
-the intent of the two older woman here was, uh-
Don't call us older women.
Older.
Oh, okay, make it clear.
What do you want me to call you, Ben?
Be nice to your grandmother.
I'm trying to be respectful in this.
Amen.
As best as I can.
Lighten up, it's not-
You guys, his, his statement was that you guys' intent was to make the best of their scheduling, right? To be most effective and efficient. Tell me the intricacies of their scheduling and their workday and what it consists of. You don't know what most of them do in eight to ten hours a day. On average, how do you know that this will improve or disimprove?
My argument, they're, why can't they all work together?
They, they do work together.
No, here's three off, here's three off.
Work the same schedule, you mean?
Yeah, right. Yeah. That's what I'm saying. How could you schedule anything?
How could you not? I think Mitch is competent enough to know if six guys are going to be here on Thursday, he's got to work for six guys.
Nadine, during the campaign last March, did you say anything about the schedules?
I didn't know anything about the schedule.
Was this, was this, it was like this when you were on the board before? It absolutely was, wasn't it?
No, it wasn't.
You know, this wasn't an issue until we came in here and made it one.
It would have been the same.
Well, it, you know, anytime you raise a, a question, and you try to make change, change is, is a hard thing to, to accept.
Change for change's sake is just wrong.
If, if, for instance, they, they said you had to run your, your route at different times, and you, you had to run it from eight to five, for instance. Let's just say we said that. That'd make an extreme hardship on you, I know that.
Sure would.
But you don't work that schedule. But you see, if we had to change that, you, you don't work eight to five, is what I meant. You work more than that, Jim, I know that. But I'm just making that as an example. If I needed to change that, and I said, Jim, that's the only time you can pick up trash here in the city of Seymour, then that would make an extreme hardship on you. And what we're trying to say here is that this change, even though it may be a hardship on the employees because of the way they figure their weekends and their time off, it will be more effective for the people of the town. And, and that's what was being said here. But on this discussion, we've been carrying on now with the discussion for a pretty good while. So we have a motion on the floor in a second, and the chair needs to bring it to a vote pretty quick here, because we've, we have drugged this out long enough.
I want to know why you want to change it, because you haven't offered any evidence that this will make it any better. You've offered no evidence. You have, and, Mary, to your point a while ago, you said that people, we're here to serve the public.
That's exactly right.
You are absolutely right. You are absolutely right.
The public pays-
Yes, they do.
All of ourselves.
Yes, yes, they do. And when we earn the respect of our employees, the public will be better served. And I'm here to tell you right now, we don't have it.
Well, no, could you guys keep talking about it?
Oh, you're, you're talking about, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, that, that's it. It's because we keep talking about it, and you want to change things. Good grief.
So if we didn't talk about it and just changed the schedule without conversation, then all would have been well.
We, we've had lots of conversations on this thing, Mr. Bennett. And like I say, anytime you present change, it meets with resistance, and this has met with a lot of resistance. And you've all aired your, your viewpoints, and I think that's good, when people can come together and air their viewpoints. But now, in parliamentary procedure, and the way this council is run, it's by majority vote, folks. So, uh, we've got a, a proposal, we've got a motion on the floor, we've got a second, and we've had lots of debate.
That has not been done this meeting. Can I get that up, if that's what you're saying?
And so long as there's not been a vote, there's still discussion on the floor, am I correct?
That's correct, until I call for a vote. Mr. Bennett.
Last night, yesterday evening, the water line broke, uh, water main, whatever you guys had happen, I don't know. Forgive my ignorance to, to whatever the terminology or the structure was that failed. Um, typically, when you get off work, what do you do? On a general evening, some of you, what do you do? You do what? Okay? Okay? Feed your animals? If, uh, if you'd gotten off work at three-thirty and was at home feeding your animals in the pasture, do you think it would have took you more or less time to get up here to fix a water leak when you were already here?
Longer. You know, I guess I'll start home, you can't just stop it coming in. They have all the thinking before I come back.
If you're halfway through, I don't know, painting a car, or fixing a car, or whatever you do, are you gonna, are you gonna put it down to come to a water leak? You're gonna have to finish what you started. We retained them two extra hours into the evening, and it's beneficial in many ways. We seen last night, the water main broke, and within minutes, they were over there repairing it.
So they're supposed to wait and kind of wait around, see if anything happens?
No.
I mean, there are going to be things like that happen.
There absolutely is.
Yeah, but we can't, you know.
And it's going to take more than-
But my point is, your opinion that this is less effective isn't any greater than my opinion that it's more effective unless we have facts. And nobody appears to have any facts, so it's just opinions.
Okay, I want somebody to tell me why we can't get the projects done, like the water line to the cabinet shop. Because we might lose them. We need businesses here, and unless we get our sewer lines and water lines, hold on a minute. Unless we get our sewer lines and water lines carried out there, we're not going to get any new business. We're not going to grow. Mitch.
Remember, we need contract-
Mr. Plummer.
And when we come to work like Monday, that Dale Hade, that low day, called the farmer. We were going to work on that water line. There was one farmer, not trying to throw him under the bus, but he needed help. I mean, you know, we unrolls the, the hose, and he's going down there to hook it up. And, uh, so we, we helped, you know, the, the police block roads and, uh, you know, help turn on the water. We, uh, helped man the hoses a little bit, and, uh, and we was there from before noon until after four-thirty. I mean, when, when we take a contractor, he comes to work. He goes and he works on, um, water line with his labor contractor, whatever kind of contractor he is. He's there from the time he goes to work till he gets off to work.
Right.
Us, we, we can plan anything we want. But, you know, just because you walked through the door this morning, and you planned to do this or that, you know, so if somebody called, you know, you may have fifteen different changes. And by the time you get done doing all this here, you know, that, uh, you know, somebody's over here, and they cut a tree or something, you know, and tore down a power line, or, uh, you know, the different things, and, and here later, uh, this I can deal. We have to haul all the trash every day, because, you know, we're not bringing in trailers. We're making a big mess over there. We've got to haul all that off, and, uh, well, like, you know, we had to stop, go to the Apple Festival, and then we had to come back up here, and a couple of chickens cooking food there, where they just use that. It was so often, we had to, you know, get all the, go over to Paul Hartman, and just pray to clean the breakers and, and that. So, I mean, it's not a cut-and-dry deal for us to go, you know, do that, even though we plan it, and, you know, that we don't purposely throw kinks in it, so, well, we can't get it done. And then by the time we got over there yesterday, uh, no, day before, we read meters. The meters comes up, we read meters, and then, you know, we've got to go put a test meter or something. And then we went back over there the other day, of course, plank, mark, and all that was gone over there. So we had to call a relocate to, uh, get it relocated, and, you know, there's, they get three days on that. So, I mean, it just, it's hard to schedule anything to-
Mitch, let me ask you this. Now, you're talking about the first week, and I like Wednesday, there was three people off. Could them three people not have helped kind of take up the slack of what you guys had done?
Everybody's been reading meters, I believe.
Well, I know it, but there's three guys off. Couldn't they been doing something else that, to help everyone else? On Wednesday, there's three guys off.
In other words, she, she was asking, couldn't we get more work done if those people were here?
There's three people.
Well, it, it usually takes us so long to read meters.
Well, not read meters.
And, you know, if I work in ten hours, we can get a lot more meters read in ten hours. And, and just like yesterday, uh, there was a cutout, it broke, and we had to go fix it, and, you know. And different things coming up that, I mean, whether you work ten hours or two to eight hours-
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It takes sixteen hours to read meters, it's going to take sixteen hours or twenty hours to read the meters.
You would, uh, you would have those same problems if you worked in five eights, or if you worked in four tens. You'd have the same problem.
That's what I'm saying.
And so, so what I, what I think you're saying is that you would fix that problem, whether or not you were working five eights, or whether or not you were working four tens. The, the emergencies are going to be taken care of. Sure you do.
You know, I mean, you know.
Sure you do, and we hold your hands up for that. But-
Whether it's in the middle of the night or whatever, I mean, still, I mean, but, you know, a lot of times, the things not getting done is, uh, beyond our control. Or, you know, like several dog calls, like one dog kills a cat, you know, that's a man eating dog, you know, so.
Per that last statement, you would agree that, that eight hours and ten hours is going to pose the same problems?
You're going to have the same problems in, in either event.
So you're not going to benefit?
But you're going to get more work done, is what we're trying to tell you. You get more work done if you have a more evenly worked week's schedule. So that, that's the, that's the crux to the issue. How can we get more work done with the employees that we have? Is it five eights, or is it four tens? And we have a, we have a motion on the floor, we can re, you, you don't have a record of that?
I don't think motions carry from meeting to-
Why don't you just make it, you have a record of the last meeting?
It was tabled, it was tabled.
Yeah.
If something must be, why don't you just restate it from the last meeting, just so everybody knows what the motion is?
Very good, Doug.
You can read it from the minutes from last meeting.
Do you have it?
If you've got eight guys-
If, if not, we can, we can restate the motion. I think Nadine made the motion at the last meeting.
If you've got eight guys all working forty hours a week, uh, three-hundred-and-twenty man-hours.
You have it?
Seven currently, but-
If you don't have it, you can tap it.
I'm not there yet. Uh, if you've got, as of the most recent schedule, if you've got eight guys scheduled forty hours, that's three-hundred-and-twenty hour work, no matter if it's five eights, or if you work it in twelves, or, it doesn't matter how you split it up, you're not going to get more than forty hours of work out of forty hours of work. Five eights and four tens isn't going to accomplish anything more. You said they're going to get more done in the five eights. They'll get more work done, was your statement. How so? They can only be themselves one time? Just because they're here five eights doesn't mean that they double in capacity and more can magically happen. It's still three-hundred-and-twenty labor hours.
Well, it will be, it'll be the same amount of hours. It'll be the days that are worked will be more beneficial.
They'll be the same amount of hours?
Well, for, for instance, for instance, it's, you know, the days are going to be getting shorter here pretty quick. And if you come in at seven o'clock in the morning, Mr. Bennett, what will you be able to see and what businesses are open at seven o'clock in the morning in this town?
That's a good question. I guess the next time the lights go out at three in the morning, they should wait till daylight to come in and make the repairs.
Well, they, they'll come in and, and take care of the emergencies.
Yes, it is.
The question, the question is here, is which is the most effective work schedule? Is it five eights or four tens? That, that's a, that's a question.
It's forty hours.
It's forty hours.
It's forty hours.
Yeah, whether or not it is five eights or four tens. I mean, that's a question on the, on the table right now.
That's no question. There is no question.
We got, we got one more comment from, and then we're going to restate the question, then we're going to vote. Yes, John?
City hall is open at seven in the morning, till five-thirty at night, five days a week. That's when we're doing our operations, often, when we're out working, we're doing our wastewater lab checks, and working on the sewer system. That's our operations, our fifty hours a week. Our pay period are two weeks, which is every other Friday, which is eighty hours. The city is actually up and running and operating a hundred hours during that time. Correct?
Correct.
Sounds right to me, John.
We're only paying eighty hours of pay period.
How many, how many are on the sewer, John? How many work at the sewer plant? Two at the sewer plant?
Two. We don't take our days off on the same day. We rotate those each day through the week. If we have a break, if we have a problem or something like that, some of the other guys, others come and run the backhoe for us, so they'll get, you know, if there's an emergency or something, as we do with them.
Yeah.
You know, if there's something going on. But the point I want to make is, during that hundred hours of operation, the city is actually paying their employees eighty hours. That's a twenty-hour benefit per eighty hour, or per average pay period. When you work fifty hours a week, you're only paying forty. You're getting an added value of ten hours' work for that week. More than fifty.
More than fifty.
Yeah, work, you know, the citizens expect us to be here when city Hall's open and we all, but I just wanted everybody to consider that, you know. An eight-hour week, an eight-hour day gives you forty hours a week.
What time does everybody go over to the shop?
That's seven o'clock. Everybody don't go to the shop.
No, at night?
Do we all, do we all punch a time clock every morning? We, we do down at Shit, but do you out there too, John?
We go, I turn my time clock in, I turned my time card in the last week.
Right.
I go straight to the wastewater plant.
Right.
At seven o'clock, I'm over there working at that time.
Yeah.
But I just wanted that for everybody's consideration.
Very good. All right, I think, well, we've got one more comment here. Chair recognizes Mr. David Carpenter.
Can you get any business done between the hours of seven and five thirty every day of the week, five days a week? Can? Can you get a company tomorrow? Anything? Is there any day that Lisa and Leslie are off the same day, Friday and Monday? Or is it the last day?
Maybe, yeah, that one.
There are two, two weekends?
Yeah.
Two weekends in one month, both of you are gone.
Not two weekends, probably.
Yeah, I look at the schedule.
Yeah, we've, we've got, in my opinion, we have some scheduling problems and, and that's what...
Is it a little bit unofficial just for the office, do you work eight hours five days a week and then you move one to come in at seven, one to come in eight, nine, ten?
Well, that's been suggested and Ms. Howe pointed out to me that it's, it's kind of disrupting if, if you work, if you have one come in at, let's say at eight and she works till, what would that be, five thirty with a thirty-minute lunch and one come in at nine and work till six thirty. It's, it's, and then the next time you reverse that. It makes it a little unsettling for the people working that schedule. And they, they've requested that we work a steady schedule. If we're going to make the change, we need to do it from for everybody to eight to five thirty. Am I right, Leslie?
I just think that if you start staggering the times...
Can I make a question, please?
Shelley, would you come, come up and...
I think the six o'clock thing is pertinent. It is pointing at all of you, something earlier about, I take more money then from seven o'clock in the morning until eight o'clock in the morning. So, if we are going to stagger, I think, seven to four on eight to five or something like that, because you're going to lose a lot of money from seven to eight o'clock in the morning because people stop on their way to work.
Yeah, and point well taken. And we could stagger the shifts. That would be, that would accommodate the city better, but it might not accommodate the employees. And that's, that's the point I'm making. And Ms. Howe pointed that out to me.
You would have more overtime too, because when people take their vacation time during the summer, you have to cover those hours that you're open. Those hours are still going to have to be covered whenever people are taking their time off.
Well, true enough, but if you have, if you had the two working in the office and one came in an hour later, then you're going to work the same amount of time.
Well, if there's two in the office and one takes off, somebody has to work an extra hour that day.
Or the whole week if it's a week vacation.
Well, not if they come in an hour later, though, they wouldn't.
Then, then you're still losing that hour. Somebody's got to be here. If they come in an hour later for that week, then nobody's here for that first hour.
Yes, there'll be, you get two in the office, you'll have one person here, only on the days when, when the other person's off, when someone's off.
That was exactly my point, when somebody is off.
That's true. That's true. All right, now, we've, we've hashed this out pretty thoroughly, I think, and I'd like to have the motion restated at this time, please.
Nadine, do you want to make your motion again?
Well, I, I'd make a motion for the guys that all work from like seven to four in the summertime.
All right.
And in the wintertime, it's usually dark at eight and eight to five in the wintertime. And the girls in the office, Leslie moves downstairs.
Are you saying five days a week? Eight to five, five days a week?
Well, in the summertime, seven to four.
But still five days a week?
Yes, five days.
Start earlier and get off earlier. I understand.
And Leslie moved downstairs and when Shelley's not, not busy helping Lisa, then she can help Leslie.
Then Shelley would be training for, uh, you know, it just makes good sense and we've talked about this. We, we either need a part-time person to do that or we need one of our office staff to train for this because if something happened to miss out, I don't know how, it would be very difficult to move on.
Exactly.
If we didn't have anybody that knew how to get into the system and do part, at least part of what she does, because she's a very integral part of this system. You hear that?
I did hear that.
All right. All right, listen, we, we really hashed this thing over and I see your hand, but we have, we're restating the question now. We're in the process of restating the question or the motion. And Nadine had just made that motion again and with, with the revisions...
Yeah, and with the start, like, not to start till like October?
October one, with the starting date being October one. All right, so the, the question has been re, or the motion's been restated. The, the chair would entertain a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
I suppose if I bring it up yet again, then it's going to be us that is diminishing morale for bringing it up, not you guys for changing the schedule, according to your statements. You said that morale was at an all-time low because...
No, you said that, Mr. Bennett.
You know, I have said that morale's at an all-time low.
And Mr. Ashley said it.
If you would have let me complete it, the sentence, if I had known that that statement was going to be accurate. You said morale was at an all-time low because Jim and I say that it's low.
I did say that, yes.
It's not at an all-time low because we say it's low. It's at an all-time low because we're jacking with these people day in and day out.
Okay, now, we've had, we've had discussion. The time for discussion is over. We've got a motion and a second on the floor. I'm going to call for the vote. And I'd like, I'd like a roll call vote on this issue. It's, it's very important to us, so I need a roll call vote, please.
Grady Bennett?
Absolutely not. And I'll say I wasn't done with discussion, but if that freedom's been so taken from me, then so be it.
Yes.
Nadine Chris?
Yes.
Jim Ashley?
Lord, no.
The only public's opinion that matters is the opinions that have been rendered to these three. The opinions that Jim and I or you guys received does not matter.
Well, it's a difference of opinion.
Yes.
As well has mine.
Yes.
Probably the same amount of calls, call for call, that you're getting, I'm getting. The same with the electric rates and the PPA and everything else.
Exactly.
You're getting calls, that doesn't mean we're not getting calls in adversity to that.
I didn't say that.
I know, but that's...
I'm just saying what I, I can only speak for myself, Grady.
Exactly.
And what I'm getting.
Okay, now...
You know, the people pay, the whole town pays everything that goes on right here. They pay the employees, they pay whatever we get, they pay for everything. So, they, I have to listen to them.
Absolutely. As, so you'll understand our responsibility and desire to listen to those that are bending our ear.
Exactly.
And that's, that's what the case is here and we're to a point that, that literally there are just as many arguments for both sides of the facts here.
That's right.
There is.
There is.
People are talking to you about the five eighths, people are talking to me about the four tens. There's no real facts you can show me that one is more beneficial than the other, other than if it's broke, not broke, don't fix it. We are disrupting these guys' lives and it is going to show.
Well, it's, it's not going to be popular and we, we know that. Change is never popular. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second, we've had a roll call vote, we've got two councilmen in favor, we've got two councilmen opposed. In this situation, I'm going to call on my parliamentarian once more to tell me exactly where my position is in that.
Well, you have, in a tie vote, you can break the tie.
Well, as he got uninterested party though, I mean, I don't think that he can make a decision on this because he's openly stated his opinion and how he feels about it.
I would agree that Sam, that he has, but so is all the other aldermen. I mean, everybody on the council has a, has an opinion.
Well, I know we're not talking about the alderman, we're talking about the mayor and he has to be, he has to be neutral and he can't be because he's stated the fact that he wants the change.
I, I...
Because it's more efficient.
Sam, I, I see your point, but there's, there'd be no precedent for him not being, for the mayor not being able to vote on this. And honestly, everybody on the council has a, a strong opinion one way or the other and, and in the case of tie, the mayor gets to break the tie out of vote.
He does, if, according to our ordinance, as if he's an uninterested party, and he is interested, he's stated that openly in these meetings.
I would agree. And, and I'm not trying to argue, generally speaking, the, in the law, the interested generally means financially interested.
Well, he doesn't, according to Blackswell, the Blackswell.
I, I, I'm with you. I mean, generally speaking, when you talk about interested party, it's dealing in terms of conflict of interest and it's, you should, you should recuse yourself from voting because you have an interest in it, meaning I'm going to financially have a financial gain to it or, or somehow it's going to benefit my family business or something like that.
Such as, such as the tie that was broke when he voted to give himself more power and authority.
Right, and see, we had that same discussion.
That we allow.
Because, you know, we went from...
Mr. Bennett.
Being equal to him being my boss and nobody felt like that was, was unbiased and I, I do, I, I, you know.
I, and I, I understand what you're saying. I, truly, there is no law that would say that he can't vote. I mean, I understand what you're stating, but there, there...
It may not be, but our ordinance has stated that if he's a person of interest, he can't break the tie.
What is the definition of person of interest?
It's not defined in our code.
It's not defined in our code, but it is defined in law.
Let me just say this to, to that Sam, if I might. If the mayor, breaking the tie, has no persuasion one way or the other, how in the world is he going to vote?
But you do have the persuasion. You've already told us how you feel about it, Larry, even tonight.
Well, you haven't...
You're in favor of the five eights.
I am, I am, because I think it's the most efficient use of time in employee for the city.
Well, I know, but see, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be that way. You should be independent of what they think.
Well...
I don't feel, you know, I'm just...
Here, here's the way that this, this all comes down, Sam. It's a, it's a matter of legislating how ordinances and motions carry forward in the government of a town. And the government of the town is carried forward in the way that we're proceeding. That's why I've asked for a point of law, but you disagree with the point of law. Mr. Bennett disagrees with the point of law.
I disagree with the division of power that we vote into, but you know...
Well, my suggestion is that to go get a law degree and, and change the law, I guess.
Well, how about, how about this? How about an attorney general's opinion on this?
Well, I mean, you're, you're free under the law to do that if you see fit and...
I'm not talking about Sam doing it. I mean, we, these, these decisions are critical to the future of our city.
And I know that. I know that.
And we're, we're about to make a decision here that our people do not want and their citizens do.
Employees don't want, that's true.
Employees, that's right. And their citizens too, and I don't think we're taking into consideration that they aren't citizens. We're, we're ignoring the fact that they are by doing something to them that they don't want.
So, you're saying we're paying for nothing?
I understand.
No, ma'am, I'm not. I'm not. I, I'm not an attorney, he is, and I'm certainly...
That's right.
...about what's said here.
That's right.
I'm not saying that at all, but I have an opinion.
And, and you're welcome, and you're entitled to that.
I'm not an attorney either, Larry, but before you vote, I would like to get a second opinion.
Well, I, I, you can get, you can get a second opinion.
With all due respect, we need a second legal opinion.
You can get a second opinion. We need to carry forward the proceedings once they're over.
No, you want to carry forward with the proceedings.
Well, I, I intend to carry forward.
That's right, that's right.
Yes, sir, I intend to carry forward. Because I want, I want to go into some other discussion besides this one that we're on. So, yes, I know it's a very weighty decision and I know...
I don't want to do, Larry, right after you got elected. We stood right in there and you told me right off the bat, this won't work. We got people taking four-day vacations.
That's what it's come out of.
And that's what it's about. That has eaten you alive.
It's, I think that it is not, not good for the city, Jim, that's what I think. I think that it's a travesty of, of the way we put time schedules together here. It's not effective. It just isn't effective.
It certainly is.
Well, we've got a difference of opinion on that. And we've got a difference of opinion on this issue. And you're entitled to get a second opinion on this. And we may revisit this if you in fact get a second opinion and it's different than our attorney has just visited this situation. I'm going to vote. I, and then I will let you talk. I think, you find that humorous, Mr. Bennett?
I do.
Well, you know what? I think it's a very serious matter and I think the city needs to be served.
I find it a very ridiculous matter.
Well, that's a difference of opinion, Jim. That's why...
You're not representing the people.
Let the record state that the mayor votes in favor of the ordinance or the, the motion and the motion carries, it's got a majority vote and so the motion carries forward. Motion passed. Now, if you want to get a second opinion and to revisit this and bring it up...
It's a little too late now, it's done, Larry. Drop it.
No, it, very good.
Well, let's get a measuring stick and let's measure the effectiveness of this new schedule starting October first.
That's, that's fine, Mr. Bennett. That's fine. All right, now, let's move on to the city attorney's report.
I don't think that's bad.
Okay. Then we're going to start down here with Mr. Bennett and go forward. Alderman's report.
I make a motion that we draft an article to be placed in the Webster County Citizen to run for, for two weeks and we solicit applications for the position that has been vacated.
I'll second it. Oh, yes, that's, that's for JB.
Our people are important, but we dearly forget about them two days a week.
JB has, has resigned and we have a vacancy at the city. So, that, that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Mr. Ector.
Help wanted it.
Yes, help wanted it, yes.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Bennett, you head the floor.
I have nothing further at this time.
Very good. Councilman Carpenter?
I don't have anything further.
Somebody needs a second motion, we need to vote on that according to parliamentary procedures.
You mean the, the motion to place, add in the paper? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to place and add in the paper for a vacancy that has occurred in the city. Do I hear a second?
I seconded it. I already had.
Sorry, Jim.
Okay, we've got...
It's all right.
Whoever.
I do have one more issue I failed to do my homework on it.
Let's vote on this issue if that's all right.
I thought we just did.
No, we have...
Motion and a second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by same eye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. Mr. Bennett, you still head the floor.
There's a, an ordinance, I suppose, and I would like for us to find it and look and see exactly what it says and how it spells it out. At the last meeting, you indicated that you do have the authority to fire someone at your will solely.
I, in, I...
And I do not believe that to be true.
I intimated that-
I believe that-
There are certain situations where uh, an employee can be dismissed.
For ten days without pay until uh, only, only termination by hiring a board vote.
I think, I think two or three days.
I just, I just want clarity on that ordinance to make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, it's in the policy and procedure manual.
I believe it's in the ordinances as well, possibly.
Uh, I'll be glad to bring that forward for you and to uh, uh, discover for you any, anything that's in the city ordinance.
I don't believe it to be uh, probably fair in this setting for one man to have the discretion to terminate.
Well, the only, only reason for termination is number one would be a flagrant violation of uh, of the policy and procedure manual. And some of those are using drugs while on duty. Um, I don't know, I don't, I don't have my policy and procedure manual turned to that. But we need to, we really need to work on this policy and procedure manual because there are areas that, that need to be talked about and possibly changed. I'll find it here. But uh, while I'm looking, anything else, Mr. Bennett?
No, at this time, I would just like clarity on that, the mayor's ability or role. I, I, I just contest, I don't believe that you have that authority by ordinance, and I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
Very good. Well, what I was speaking to is our policy and procedure manual, and your city manager has the authority to, as you say, terminate an employee. And uh, one of those is insubordination, uh, using drugs, uh, not following orders that have been presented to him. You see, we've got, we've got information in this policy and procedure manual about a, a office that uh, needs to be uh, somebody in the system needs to be promoted, and it's uh, you consider the length of service and their experience uh, along with those uh, promotions that you do. It's all in here.
I, I understand that. I'm not really as concerned with all that at this moment as I am clarity on whether the mayor can hire and fire without a board vote. Uh, I understand there's a law that's outlined and entailed in the policy and procedure manual. Uh, not pertinent to the information I'm looking for at the time.
Well, if, as far as the ordinances are concerned, I don't have them in front of me. I've got a copy of the book back on my desk, but I'll be glad to provide you what I can find in the ordinances that pertain to that. I'll be glad to bring that forward at next meeting.
Appreciate it. That's it for now.
Very good. Councilman Carpenter.
Nope.
None?
Uh-uh, but I'm done.
Councilman Crisp.
I was thinking about, Leslie, did you keep a minute, uh, uh, did you keep some minutes on file? The Lord Matt came in. She was so upset. She said she couldn't get the minutes.
She's never asked me for them.
Uh, so she didn't come in and ask you and talk to him, talk to her, and when she was upset, come over, store time?
When was this?
Oh, after we had a meeting last time, yeah.
That was not, that's not even close, is it, Sam?
No, she didn't, she did not ask me for minutes or anything.
She asked for a copy of minutes downstairs with the girls in the office.
Oh, well, that was just, they probably hadn't been directed yet. But, but she, no, I did not know that till after all this happened. Um-
Oh, I guess Sam came down.
But um, but, but the Lord Matty has never put a request for minutes in.
What's the allotted timeframe uh, after a meeting for the minutes to be available? I thought you could, that's why I looked at you.
Seventy-two hours. You didn't ask me, but I knew it.
I thought I didn't do, but I wasn't sure.
Let me, let me just read this paragraph to you, Mr. Bennett, and it, it speaks to that question you just asked. Says, "As a general approach, discipline of action involving more than a verbal or written warning should not be initiated without first consulting the foreman." Uh, and of course, that was, the ultimate person in that would be Sam. He has the day-to-day management of the city. "There will be circumstances, however, where the immediate action is necessary and not prior consultation, if possible." Uh, "The foreman is, is considered to be the immediate supervisor, and the mayor is responsible for overall personnel and department activities. The mayor will work closely with the foreman, resolving the issues." And of course, in this case, it would be the city administrator, which would be Sam. And then it talks about uh, grounds for suspension or release.
Would that not firstly fall on their immediate supervisor, which would be their department?
It would be, but if they fail to do what the supervisor said, and Sam, and the supervisor told Sam, "I can't get it done, they won't do it," then he can dismiss that person for cause. Immediate, immediate termination. It's the way I read it.
And that's- That's what I contest. I'm quite sure there's an ordinance that, that disallows that, that there has to be a board vote. The city manager nor mayor has the authority to terminate without a board vote. I believe you can suspend or send home without pay for ten days.
That, that is the first, that is the first, yes, sir.
I don't think that-
That's first course of action, and, and if that doesn't work, well, then they can be terminated. But they, they can't, well, they, they can be terminated for cause without the board vote.
But it deals with a point of officer. I think what you're thinking of, Grady, is the, a point of officers like, for instance, like me or something like that. There's a deal where it takes two-thirds vote at the board of aldermen and that, that's-
Any officer, and it says any, any officer, appointed officer.
Just hiring and firing in general, I'm quite sure that, that we've been down this road, that uh, and not a, not a Missouri revised statute up. There's, there's a specific ordinance, I believe, um-
The reason that ordinance was passed that Grady's talking about is because we had a city administrator that resigned, quit, walked out the door and fired a man on his way out of town. That's the reason that was changed.
Yeah. Well, and, and that, that's uncalled for. We, we know-
But is there, you know-
Huh? Unless the ordinance has been, um, unless it's been amended, I think that that ordinance still exists.
Well, I'll, I'll do some research on that. I promise you I'll do the research, and uh, if you don't fire me before the next meeting, well, I'll be here to give it to you.
What's that take?
A two-thirds vote of the council. Miss, uh, Miss Crisp, do you have anything further?
Did they ever get in and add mom's building?
Did we get in that building?
Internet, at the mom's building.
Oh, internet, internet. I don't know, Sam?
Can I ask a question?
He's, he's got a device right there. Looks like a-
Okay.
This, okay. Uh, that project's going forward. Mike Gerke is just standing in the-
He's gonna pay for it.
-like, paid for for a year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he's been in contact with the historical community, um, through their underneath the ARS council. That project, as I understand, is going forward. Uh, so I think everything's fine.
Right.
I think if there was an issue, it would work through the county.
Yeah.
So I think that's moving forward. We'll stay after that.
Nothing else, uh-
So we can return what we purchased.
I'm on the ARS council. You, you guys aren't obligated to provide it soon.
We may not be obligated, but that's about as city and community-minded as it can be. It's just the right thing to do.
It is.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be great if you guys would, but you know, fortunately we've got a benefactor with, with Gerke who's doing it and, um-
Great.
Which was really nice, and that buys us time. And then, you know, get hooked up, and then the interim, you guys after a year will pick up the bill. That'd be great. I understand it could be about a hundred bucks a month. So-
Are you, you got something going right now?
I think it's in the process, yes.
We have this right here. It's ready to go.
Okay, perfect.
I think something like that would probably be cheaper than the-
As I understand-
No, they take that with them. That's-
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Councilman Crisp?
And then someone asked me if Chuck got paid for coming to these meetings.
Someone said-
Someone come in and asked me if Chuck got paid for coming to these meetings.
Who is get, who gets paid? Yes.
I told Larry that.
Yes, they get paid overtime.
Yeah.
Time and a half. I was not aware of that until I asked the question.
I think if he's expected to give a report, then he should be compensated for showing up to give-
Either that or we need to let him an hour, hour off or whatever it takes.
Because that's illegal.
What, taken off?
Yeah, he's an hourly employee. You can't comp and flex if you're an hourly employee. It's essentially polluting taxes, payroll tax.
I don't know that that's true, but could you speak to that?
I, I don't know that either. I can look at it, but it's, I think what Grady's saying, if you're an hourly employee, if you're actually on the clock, if you're working, so to speak, then that, you have to be paid, like-
Salary, salary employee, salary employee can, can-
Yeah, can, not- Can take comp time, but hourly cannot.
Absolutely cannot, hourly. You, you, you have to get paid for your hours. You can't flex that off or comp it out throughout the week as far as, unless you work for MoDOT. Then I think you-
Can, could you not reduce his work schedule by one hour and then have him to come in for, for this meeting for an hour?
I don't think you could.
I suppose you could, but I don't think it'd be legal.
Yeah, I don't think it would either.
Wouldn't be. Well, that would be a legal question.
Not as long as he's hourly.
Uh, Mr. Gerke, you have something to say to that?
So what you went through this with your business and basically what you're saying is if, if Chuck was here for an hour at a council meeting, he needs to work one less hour during the day.
Don't get too hard.
That's what I would say. Right.
That's how you deal with it?
Yeah.
I think it's an IRS issue.
I don't remember exactly.
Okay. Uh, this is something, I guess, Mr. Link, if you-
I was in management for thirty years and-
Okay. If you would tell us how to, how to address that, then, okay, uh, Councilman Crisp, anything else? Councilman Ashley?
Yes. And I guess the first thing that's in order, Mr. Gerke, I apologize. I apologize. I have never, waters free, I left three quarters back there when I got this body. Having taken paper clips from here. I apologize. Haven't been that man in a long time. I apologize.
That's expected.
Uh, been a long sit tonight.
Excuse me.
About serving the public. Uh, about representing all the public. And I think the way that we can better serve Seymour is if we start the proceedings for whatever it takes, and Paul might have to let us know, to have six aldermen instead of four.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Or even five.
No, we're not-
Yeah, because your mayor doesn't find great pleasure in breaking the tie.
You can still have a tie with six, but you won't have near the ones we do now.
Either that or seven.
And the deadlock that we have going on right now is not the way Seymour city government was intended to run the ward.
Unless you split it up into five wards.
Yeah, well, I think that's true too.
Sure.
This idea was floated to me maybe by you, Jim, or stuff like, anyway, it's come up a few times in the past and-
Yeah, it's been talked about before.
Yeah, I kind of have homework on it, and you know, when you look at how this town is of our size, Paul, you represent Stratford, don't you?
And City of Battlefield. It's actually about this size and they have six.
That's what I was getting at, saying, I was gonna use Battlefield my next, yeah, two cities this size that, that use, there are other ones also. I, I think this, in our ordinance, there's one thing that's written several times, is a two-thirds vote.
Which doesn't work for our city.
Well, with four, that, there is no math to make sixty-six point seven six.
Right.
Right, right, right.
And if you have six, well, it does. Four of six, of course, is-
It makes the majority and the two-thirds vote, in essence, the same. We have four aldermen.
And what the framework of the city was, was framed, so to speak, uh, from the beginning of time, as far back as I can look back in my editions, which go back to uh, the old flashlight papers of, of nineteen eleven, uh, I find that, that we had four. And of course, the city's grown exponentially since then. I think we have five hundred ninety people. And uh, and, and that keeps it in sense. And of course, we're about two thousand. And I, I think six would provide good representation. I think you could just simply add a north and a south.
Right.
Yes.
Uh, keep the districts as they are, so the city equally represented vote. I think Jim's idea is excellent.
I think it'd be great.
One that I think we've all thought about.
We got talked about before. You and I talked about it.
Yeah, the mayor finds no pleasure in breaking the tie.
I think, I think if you're gonna consider, and uh, this is just gonna muddy the water, but if you're gonna consider adding uh, the fifth and sixth alder position, I think you need to restructure the, the pay because that will increase and-
Yeah.
Well, and I also think that, and I, I haven't looked at this for a while, but I believe that has to go out for a vote. It's not something that the board can just pass by ordinance. It's a, it's a vote of the people. It's on the same, it's on the same statute section from Missouri is, like, there's an ability for people to have four-year terms instead of two-year terms, but you can't change that without a vote of people as well.
Is it too late to get it put on the November ballot so that we can have, so that we can have six aldermen for April?
Um, I believe it.
We don't have a November ballot this year. It's an awful election year.
Right.
So it would have to be a spring election. It'd have to be-
Yeah.
So then it can't be done until April, and then we can't run it till a year from April?
Well, I would think that if the voters approve in the April election, all, I think we have a special-
You, you could have a special election in the, in the, in the, in June.
In June.
Not full terms. They have to run after it passed in April, assuming it passed.
I make a motion that we proceed with-
We look at it-
Whatever we need to do to add two aldermen.
I'll, I'll second.
I think that should include pay reduction for the elected officials to some extent. I don't know-
Mr. Ashley has the motion, the proper parliamentary procedures for him to amend his motion. If you'd like to amend your motion to include what Mr. Bennett just suggested, you may do so.
Oh, I don't care. None of us care for the money anyway.
No.
Well, I mean, it's just-
But it's about seven thousand dollars a year.
We, we do need to keep in, we, we do need, we do need to keep in mind though, if, if you don't have, if you don't have some money there, nobody's gonna run.
As it is.
Right, yeah.
My door's locked.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to, to back in the days when, when, when I was, I've been doing this for twenty-two, three years now. I remember when, when Jimmy was mayor and when we raised the alderman pay, it went from thirty-five million to seventy-five. And Frank Wexler was the city attorney at that time, that flashes people back, uh, long gone. And uh, the reason the pay was bumped from thirty-five to seventy-five, and I won't mention names, but I will say this. We, we got one vote short of electing a candidate in Will Hitchcock, who was-
Yeah, I remember Will.
And that, and the, the question was, was at thirty-five, we weren't able to draw quality candidates. At seventy-five, the, the feeling was, uh, the two meetings a month, it was essentially pay your utility bill at a normal home. And uh, that kinda made it work.
So utility bills were a hundred and fifty dollars that long ago?
Not now.
No.
Well, yeah, maybe they weren't that. I mean, that was kind of the point. People said, you know, it's how you feel. The point being that, that when they bumped the pay, uh, it didn't work to that effect. We did get better candidates. Uh, uh, and we started having contested races that were a little bit higher quality. So I, I think if you start lowering pay on that, not that it's that big of a deal, like Jim said, nobody's doing this, nobody, but at the same time, you know, we have to do all these special meetings, and you have to do the budget study meetings, or like next week, if you're going to have to study, okay, if we not void the PPA, those things take lots of time. There's only so much you can expect from people to, to give up their time with no compensation. I mean, people are busier than they have ever been, just against me. And you don't have a lot of time with families now. If you're requiring people to stop for these special meetings, which seems to be what's going on, there should be a little bit of compensation. It does, at least buffers it a little bit. And again, in the big city budget picture, when you guys are looking at what, what is your budget, Sam? Three, four million dollars, I think?
Four million, around there.
Or, or, you know, adding two spots at seventy-five bucks, I mean, it's just not that huge of a, of a budget in my, in my-
Couple, two or three thousand, four thousand dollars, probably.
You'd be big saying you have to figure out a couple of seats.
We'll work it out.
Got that figured out already.
Okay, you did, Sam, yeah. So, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't think that the pay thing's a real big issue.
No.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and amended to consider the salary issue, and, and we've debated that just a little.
If nobody's interested in-
So do you want to amend that motion, or you wanna let it stand as it is?
What are you still thinking there?
If nobody's interested as far as the board, there's no reason for him to amend his motion. If that's not anything anyone wants to entertain but myself, I'm just thinking, we're nickel and diming and looking for two hundred dollars underneath the rugs here and there when we're, we're collectively fifteen thousand dollars a year sitting here. We're gonna add a couple more thousand dollars. We just reduced Mr. Burke's pay. We, we, we say time and time and time again of how great and swell of a job he's done, but rather than go off this merit system we speak of, we've reduced his salary. And if, if, if adding two more positions is gonna put us in such financial constraints, we have to reduce someone else's salary, it should be ours.
I, I think that was a voluntary reduction on Sam's part.
I do not think that was voluntary reduction. It was a three to two vote.
I'll get to it.
All right, Jim, have you got, do anything else, Jim?
Let's do this first.
Well, okay, you, you've got, got a motion on the floor.
I second it.
And we're not going to amend your motion.
I second it.
Then we've got a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Jim, anything else?
Uh, probably not. Give me a minute.
I don't think so. He didn't, he didn't, I don't think so.
No, we didn't amend the motion.
Not having any.
Nothing else. All right, with that, I, I promised Nancy a chance to speak.
Denise.
Oh, I'm sorry. Denise.
Yeah, it's Denise.
Denise, Ms. Denise, if you would come forward, please.
Hopefully it wasn't on the issue we already voted on.
Well, it was, but that's all right. I was going to ask, my name's Denise Berg.
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to ask, um, alderperson, councilperson, Mary.
Yes.
She said last week, or the last time, that she was confused about the issue, and that she wanted to talk to the employees.
Exactly. I did talk to several of them.
Uh-oh.
I did not talk to all of them.
And how did that go?
Well, it, it's not what they wanted, no.
Okay.
But I have talked to more people, Denise. My, like I said, my phone has rung off the wall at home, and I finally quit answering it for people who want, uh, the employees to work five days a week.
And I, I don't understand...
I, it just off, oh.
Well, and for one reason, I asked, because I have no dog in this hunt. I don't care what hours they work, as long as they work and do what they're supposed to do.
Right.
Right.
I don't care.
Right.
But I, too, have asked people, you know, just offhand, do you, I mean, how, how do you feel about what hours do the employees work? And you know what, most, all of them have said, not one person has said, oh, they should work eight, five, five days a week.
Yeah.
What they said was, I don't care when they work, as long as they get it done. And the other night, when that water mate, last night, when that water mate drove...
I'm aware.
You want, you want to serve the citizens of our community? Well, Sammy and I were there, and I didn't see any of y'all there.
No.
You weren't there serving the, the, the people of our city?
I was in bed.
Yeah. But those guys were.
No, but if they were sick, they would be in there, Denise. If they were sick, they would be in.
To be, to be fair, um, Sam fully knows that if there was a need for my presence at the water league, I would have been the first there.
No, and I was just saying...
I don't think there's any assistance we could have provided at the time.
No.
No, the best thing I could have done was stay out of the way.
Yeah.
When I get in the holder, usually ain't room for too many more people.
The point I was making was, the employees who work for the city are the ones who are serving the citizens. They're the ones doing the work. Y'all have been elected
Right.
to represent the citizens.
Exactly.
And I just find it interesting that only the citizens who agree with your perspective are the ones that called up.
Well, I, I don't know whether they agree or not agree, but they said that they would like to have the employees five days a week. They said they would feel better.
They would feel better.
Yeah.
I can answer that question.
I absolutely believe you, one hundred percent. There's no question about it. But it's just like, we live in two different towns.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, all I know is from what the people, they call me.
Oh, I, I believe you. I'm not questioning it one, one bit.
But I do have some, I do have one other little thing that I would like to address with the Board of Aldermen. I have a, I have a question. In May of this year, Nadine's grandson put on Facebook that I was just an angry woman because my husband was gonna pay for it. Now, that was in May, and we didn't have, we didn't know anything. There was no whispering about Sammy's pay getting paid. So I would like to know how Heath Johnson and Privy took that information.
I don't, I don't follow Face, I don't follow Facebook.
And I don't have privilege to know work schedules, to be able to screen guys
County's live stream.
Who worked when, but your husband did. He looked at the work schedules.
Yes.
Do general citizens have right to come to the board?
Sure they do, surely they do.
Why wouldn't they?
It's all transparent in the sunshine law.
Because if you have an interest, if you have an interest.
Okay, Denise, what you're saying about my grandson, you put on Facebook that, uh, when you was running against me, you didn't have the big fancy house, and you didn't drive fancy cars, you would think I didn't know you wasn't talking about me.
Can we just bow to know if we're ever, ever arguing on social media from the council chambers?
I'm gonna tell you right now, Nadine, I didn't know where you lived. I've never seen your house. And I didn't know where your, your, your... That's, that's neither here nor there.
Let's not get into a debate here. If you have, if you have a, a statement, Ms. Denise, please state your point, and, and you're welcome to do that. We just don't want debate.
I just wanted to know, before y'all done the vote, if Mary had actually talked to the employees, because she stated
Yes.
that she wanted to speak to the employees.
And I think she said that she did, so...
She did.
So that answers your question.
That answered that question.
Yes, ma'am. Very good. Well, we've been here quite a while laboring over city business. And, uh, if there's nothing else to come before the council, for the good of Seymour, the chair would entertain a motion to dismiss.
We got a question, Mary, can you spare me?
I, we, we...
You didn't have to, you have a quorum, dude.
We have a quorum.
I want it dismissed.
Do I hear a second? Jim says yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. We stand dis...